All right, all in agreement, please show by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Mrs. Smith, I'm gonna ask you today if you will give us the pledge of allegiance.
You'll please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, this time we will begin with a Goldsboro High School donation.
Chairman Burden, Dr. Dunsmore, and board members, I'm Margaret Bedore, and I've had the pleasure of working on a project to install a sound system in Goldsboro High School auditorium. So just briefly, I wanted to tell you what we've been doing for several months, and it's been pretty exciting. Spring a year ago, a small troop of us local actors went out into the schools to promote literature during Wayne County Reads. When we got to Goldsboro High School, there was a lot of noise in the auditorium, and it became evident that students couldn't hear us. When Ms. Manning said they couldn't hear Jeff Holtz or the loud Margaret Bedore, we realized there was a problem. I called my wizard friend Kim Copeland, the Wayne County Public Schools Director Specialist for the Arts, and she convened a great committee of Sherry Archibald from the Paramount Theater, Goldsboro High School Principal Manning, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services Dean Salz, and Head Choral Teacher Jason Cox. We selected the bid from Avalanche Sounds for $10,000. I actually have enjoyed calling on our 22 generous contributors. Almost everyone gave toward our project, taking out his or a few hers checkbooks right away. And then, there were a few donors who were not, who had not attended Goldsboro High School, but they gave simply because they believe in our schools. I have to recognize my husband Phil, who is a consummate fundraiser for giving me advice on this project. The Chamber of Commerce allowed us to deposit the contributions in its Wayne Charitable Foundation. This month, Scott Eli installed the equipment, and as you can see from the photo we're gonna pass around, is it going around now? Okay, I've got this great picture of the faculty of Goldsboro High School, lead choral teacher and lead band teacher. And their eyes were glistening when they saw all that sound equipment. I cannot tell you how satisfying it was to see that they were pleased and how they were looking so forward to introducing it to their classes in August. How often do you see a problem in the community and say, "I wish they'd fix that"? Well, it's been a privilege to be able to make a difference in this small way with a sound system that will lead to many programs, plays, orchestras, panel discussions, and will hopefully make the auditorium once again a center for activity in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bedore.
Thank you so much.
Good job. I've called up here the banders Kim Copeland, Principal Manning, and Dean Salz, who are all on the committee.
Good job. Good job. Good job.
We wish to thank you very much, Mrs. Bedore, and your committee members for their hard work and diligence. And we, I know that we are gonna truly enjoy the new sound system. We will know that it is there.
You will hear it.
Yes, we will hear it. Dr. Reynolds, at this time, Dr. Reynolds will present an Advanced Ed Stakeholder Survey Results.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, all members, Dr. Dunsmore. Thank you first of all for allowing me the opportunity to give you an overview of the Advanced Ed Stakeholder Survey that was administered back in March of 2018. The purpose of the Climate and Culture Survey basically is to offer the valuable information that can help the schools and to evaluate the environment and measure the perception and the aptitudes for all the stakeholders. We're talking about teachers, support staff, parents, and students. The goal of this survey is to help the decision-makers look at and analyze data and to make sure that information makes a positive change in what we are doing in our schools and to make sure that all students have a quality education. The Climate and Culture Surveys are different this year because through research, we all know that the climate and the culture makes a big difference in student achievement. So these questions are geared to gauge the climate and the culture of the schools. Okay, the surveys will be used as a part of our accreditation process, March of 2019, along with site reviews. You will have a team that go to different school sites, as well as our Elliot Observations, which we've been doing this year. And all of that together will culminate the actual visit that the team will have. And they will also use this information when they do reports, annual reports, that gives our information on pre-K through 12th grade educational implications of educational policies and practices. So this is not only just used for our benefit, it's used nationally to assess different things that's happening in the school and to make sure that they research and give feedback on those reports. Just like I said, the team will be here March 11th through the 13th, consistent of six to eight individuals. These are educators from North Carolina, from other states, that will come together for the purpose of looking at Wayne County Public Schools and determining if we are in fact following those standards that we should be following. It would be in a domain, three domains, of leadership, learning, and resources. So those are the areas that they would be looking for. Here you see the respondents, the different categories, the categories of people that did the survey, as well as the number of respondents. It's a pretty good turnout. If you see, there's about 10,000 individuals that responded to the survey. This survey was live for two weeks. You don't wanna leave them up for two weeks, but once they all responded, of course, I took the survey down, and then the information was calculated. The only area that we did not meet Advanced Ed Qualifications was parents. We should have at least 20% of our parents respond to the survey. So we're gonna do this again in November, around November sometimes. And we're gonna focus on trying to make sure that our schools understand that if we had to have a parent night or math night or whatever it is to get parents out, to set up a lab, to set up laptops so they can have those resources right there with them. It is all online, it is in multiple languages. So it's made very, it makes it easy, but we just gotta get the people out. We had plenty of students, staff, elementary students, as well as high school students. You notice, we do not survey K-2 students. And the research proved that the data and the information we received from students that young didn't really benefit in what we were looking for and what Advanced Ed was looking for. So we know they're there, and we visit, and we talk with the babies, but when it comes to surveys, they are not included in the survey. Now, you've had the opportunity to see probably all of the data, but what I did was I pulled out some of those questions that kind of focus and validates on some things that we're doing here in Wayne County. You're looking at individual learning, this is a teacher inventory, individual learning, student engagement, family engagement, professional development, dealing with data literacy, as well as student within digital learning. These are all areas that we have actually addressed in our strategic plan and our district plan. And a lot of our schools have used, have also addressed these issues. So when you look at the scores here, we need a lot of help. We need a lot of help, particularly in the individualized learning. Our teachers feel like we're not doing the best job that we can in those areas. Professional development, we're working real closely with our EC Department, with our Federal Funds Department, to make sure that we schedule and plan and implement professional development for our teachers addressing these particular areas. Also, the Elliot walkthrough tool that we used this year validates that our digital learning is very low. It's actually 1.69 on a scale of four. So our teachers feel like we are not using what we have. So we've got to do some things to make sure that they have the training to use those devices. This is a new survey. In the past, we have not surveyed support staff. Advanced Ed thought it was very important that we get feedback from our support staff, instructional assistants, clerical staff. How do they feel? What are some things that we need to look at and address with them? Particularly the area of their responsibilities, how do they feel with their responsibilities? And if you can see here, the different categories are fairly low. So we do need to pay attention to our support staff. And we need to look at what they're saying and make sure that we are treating them as professionals as they are. So that was a very interesting survey. Here's student survey. The student surveys, when you look at expectations and you're looking at what students are expected to do in the class and what they feel like they're expected to do, it makes a difference here. And if you see the scores here, they say they're learning, but then you look at all of the other areas. Are they really understanding what they're doing? Okay, how does the teachers feel? How do the teachers treat you? So that plays a big part in how the students behave in class. So if they feel like a teacher care, are they concerned, then the students are most likely, you know, won't have behavior issues and problems. So those are some things that we need to look at with our students in their interaction, respectful. So the survey for students actually have, you can probably, is about total 15 to 16 questions. And you can look at the whole report if you'd like to see it. I do have copies of that, I can share with you. Okay, this is the parent survey. This particular survey, what caught my attention were areas for the question, for example, the things that they think their students are doing in class. Working with others was 59%, but look at the completing of worksheets. Parents think that our students are sitting in class filling out worksheets. So that's a concern to me. So we've gotta work on that, and also testing. We know that sometimes we can't control the testing piece, but these are the perceptions that the parents have within the classroom. The part about respectful, supportive, and helpful have room for improvement. We definitely need to look at that. But our parent surveys and bringing parents involved and getting them involved in the child's educational process is very, very important, and we've got to look at that. And we've actually looked at some engaging initiatives that we've got going on. I know, for example, we have other positions that the Title I coordinators trying to work with us to get parents engaged, to get students engaged. They're looking at bringing on extra support staff to help educate parents with students that are not even in school yet. So those types of things that we're looking at. So what does it say? What does this survey say? It was not a surprise, the issues and the things that showed up on this survey. First of all, was looking at our instructions, revising our instructions, looking at data, teaching teachers how to use the data and how to come up with the strategies, improving the culture, getting our parents and students involved, also increasing the rigor in our classrooms, making sure that our teachers understand how to differentiate between lessons and students and making sure that their needs are met. And also, the digital teaching and learning are big parts of what we saw on this survey, which is also those things that we know on our plans that we have to address. So basically, the survey confirmed and validated those areas of need that we know are there. And when the Advanced Ed team comes into Wayne County, they're gonna look at the results, they're gonna look at our plans, they're gonna look at our strategic plan that we have each individual school, and kind of look at our student achievement data and kind of look at where we are. They realize it's a continuous improving process. They don't expect them to come in here and determine, let you know that everything's perfect, 'cause it's not. But it's a journey, it's a process. And it's something that we have to constantly, constantly work on and try and to improve for the students here in Wayne County. Are there any questions about the survey?
I do, I have a question. I have two questions. First of all, about a year ago, Dr. Artis gave us a presentation. And I posed some questions about digital learning at that particular time, about teachers having the knowledge to be able to use that tool, and were we adequately training them? You gave the figure a while ago of 1.6% with digital learning. Can you go back and discuss that a little bit? Are you saying that the students are only 1.6%? The students are learning from that, or only 1.6% of the teachers are using it, or what?
Okay, that comes from the Elliot tool. And when you go into the classroom, you go through and you actually select what you see and don't see.
Okay.
That is selected when you see students using digital devices.
Okay, so that's not reflective as to whether the teachers know how to use it or the students know how to use it and are using it. It's just what you observed when you were in there, correct?
Yes, sir, that tool is looking directly at students.
Okay, 'cause my question, my question a year ago to Ms. Artis was, are we adequately spending the dollars on digital learning, even though we've got different programs in different schools, and doing the proper training with the teachers to be able to use that now? But you've just explained, you've told me that 1.6% were actually using it when you were in there.
It's the children, 1.6% of the kids, students.
At the time you were in there.
At the time that we're in there. And we're talking about 15, 1800 different interests.
So realistically, we could have 85% then as far as...
Basically, the tools are there, and the teachers may be using it, but the students' hands are not on it.
Okay, let's go to the survey then, okay? You mentioned that parents, and I have to understand that it was parents who actually did the survey, okay? And you had X number of parents that volunteered to do the survey when you could've had a whole lot more. But out of the ones that did answer the survey, only 55% of them felt like they were being, the information they were getting from the teachers in the school was helpful in their communication.
55%.
What were the primary concerns that they had that they did not feel like? What was the other 45%? What was, what were they saying was not helpful? And what did they ask for as far as change went in the survey?
This particular survey didn't...
Or did it allow it?
This survey didn't allow that. Now, what we can do, which is a change, is when we build these surveys, we can add in questions to get further feedback. And I think whenever we do it in November, I'll develop, you know, we'll develop the questions, but if we want to get further input from what we see here, we can add in questions, additional questions.
Well, I feel like we need to, because that's a moot point of asking somebody are they helpful or not if they're not gonna tell you how you can improve.
Yes, sir, we can tailor those questions based on what we see on this survey to get more feedback.
Okay.
Dr. Reynolds, I would like to ask if you would give each board member a copy of the survey questions, because that might even help us more explain some of the answers and see where...
I sure will, I will.
How we got here, what specifically were they asked for them to say that? 55 of them feel that their interactions with the staff is beneficial or helpful.
We'll do that.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Dr. Reynolds, kind of piggybacking on a question that Mr. President asked regarding the respondents, what was your response rate? I mean, what percentage of respondents does this represent, this 10,316 out of the total population that you were targeting?
Okay.
Do you have that number?
Well, each individual section, like for example, the staff, 60% of the staff is a sufficient number. When it comes to parents, we're looking at the number of students we have, and they're looking at the percentage, 20% of that should be the response, which is 38, 3,800 parents responding, and you see we only have 1,828.
Right.
Okay.
So you have less than 50%. Less than 50%.
So.
So would you, would you say that the data, even though you did not have the higher response rate, the data would be statistically significant as it relates to the outcome?
Pretty much, yeah.
On the Elliot that you were talking about, the 1.6 with the, that's a 1.6 out of four.
Out of four.
So the Elliot is scored 1, 2, 3, 4.
Oh, okay.
A rubric, it's a rubric, I'm sorry, I should explain that. It's a rubric of 1 to 4, and we scored...
I was thinking 1.6% of 100.
Any other comments or questions?
Dr. Reynolds, I have a question. It was interesting, the 44% that folks thought that, the comment that they've spent, 44% of them, as I understand your graph here, felt like they spent most of their time taking tests. Now, and you, as we both know, there's so many tests that are mandated. But are the tests mandated on the state level or the federal level?
I would imagine parents talking about any test state, they're probably talking about tests that the kids take in the classroom. I would imagine they're talking about any test, when the kids come home, they talk about they have to take tests.
Well, I mean, I hear that all the time. I've heard Ms. Strickland make comments about testing is so laborious. And when I was a student in school, I was one of those that didn't test well. But obviously, I was not a failure. Is there anything we can do about that concept?
I mean, this is the perception of the parent, this is how they feel. I mean, testing, we, I mean, we're mandated to do tests.
I understand that that's the perception of the parent. I guess what I'm trying to determine from you is exactly what the facts are. And the facts are, do you feel like that there's too much testing?
I have no opinion on it. I know we have to, we're mandated to do tests. We have EOCs, EODs.
I hear that term all the time, we're mandated, who mandates us to do all?
It's by the state.
The federal and state.
It's mandated by the state and the federal government that we take...
Okay, well, that's what I said. I asked you, does state and federal government?
Yes, sir.
Is a primary mandate. So the reason I'm saying this is that all those parents out there that feel like there's too much testing, you need to take it to your state representatives. Would anybody disagree with that? If it's mandated by the state. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Reynolds, don't go too... Looking at your teacher inventory and your graph there, where we're talking about less, learning goals are different for each student in my class, we've got some very low numbers of 39%. That seems to signify to me that there is not a individualized type of learning culture. Would you agree with that statement?
Well, from the 39%, that's what it looks like, yes, sir.
And also, looking at that, lessons include opportunity for students to be creative and engaged. Again, another 39%. So this leads me to the question, how can we improve those particular numbers?
What we're looking at, we have to work with our teachers in our classroom, make sure that they are trained in their classroom, how to educate students at different levels, different learning styles, and as well as getting students involved. We know students that are engaged, involved, active in the classroom, learn better by doing. So our focus is to train our teachers, provide them with targeted professional development specific for these areas.
Okay, and another area of concern for me seems to be in the area of behavioral issues and discipline. Many of the schools that I have visited, that has been a major concern. Do you think that that also may impact these numbers as well?
I'm sure it do. Yes, sir, I'm sure it do.
So, and what are we doing to address that particular component of it? Because it appears that we are having a larger number of discipline problems in some of our schools. Are we doing any kind of focused intervention for particular schools where we see that behavioral issues or discipline issues are a problem?
We are doing different things at the schools. First of all, it's, like I said, providing staff development for teachers that have classroom management issues, but particularly working with the staff, the principals. We, I know in C and I department, we focus on the curriculum, but I do know behavior plays a big part of how a child learn and achieve, so all of that.
So this may lead us to look at what type of resources are actually in the individual schools and are all the needed resources there and available to those students? Would you agree?
Yes, sir.
Second of all, I believe last year, when I first came on the board, one of the things I was very concerned about was how our teachers are using data and how they are interpreting data. And from this teacher inventory, that shows me that we still have a long way to go with that element. For our future, for the upcoming year, have we made any plans to kind of address the interpretation and the use of data with all of our teachers?
Yes, sir, that's actually ongoing. If you look at our district plan and our strategic plan, it particularly tells you that we're providing PD, or we're looking at making sure that teachers have PD on interpreting data. That's one of the things that on our last Advanced Ed visit, they saw all of this data, but they didn't see how it was actually getting down to the classroom, how is a teacher using this data to change and modify their lessons? So that is an ongoing process here in Wayne County, is making sure that we provide our teachers with some PD, professional development. You know, different things come up, but our goal is to educate our teachers in determining and interpreting data and then making a difference in their classroom.
Again, and I'm just gonna ask for your opinion, I know it's not, you probably won't have any factual information that you can rely on or pull, but what would you say relative to our beginning teachers and our first-year teachers? How do they rate as it compares to these three items that I've mentioned? The learning goal, individualized training, the creative engagement with our students, as well as our interpretation and use of data?
Well, we have an excellent BT program, mentors through our HR department, and they are making sure that from day one, that those beginning teachers are in sessions, talking with mentors, are paired up with individuals in those schools that's gonna help them and support them. So we do know that it's very important that beginner teachers have that training. But we've got an excellent BT training program here in Wayne County.
And how do you determine from the training that they've been provided by HR that it is actually being... is actually being effective?
Well, we're hoping in the schools, along with the principals, along with the staff and assistant principals, that they're also monitoring and assisting in helping the new teachers.
But when you see numbers like thirty-nine percent and forty-four percent, would that raise the issue to you whether or not it's being effective?
I think across the board, we probably need PD across the board, but yes, sir. Our goal is to make sure our new teachers receive all of the help and assistance that they can as new teachers. It's, it's testing, but I think we have people in place to assist them.
And, and I know I keep hearing you mention professional development. One of the concerns I have about professional development is that I have attended several professional development type of training programs and those training programs, from my perspective, and I can only speak for me, I can't speak for the teachers, the parents, or anybody else, but a lot of times those professional development programs are more feel-good kind of programs that might motivate that, that teacher or that parent while they're in that session. But the transference of what they are learning in that session, sometimes I don't, I don't know if it's really taking place. So that's one of the things I'm, I'm very much concerned about.
Well, one thing we, we ask after professional development session is feedback. We have surveys and we have feedback. Let us know, how, how did this help you? How are you going to use it in the future? Now, that's one of the requirements that we do in C and I department. Every time we have a professional development session is to gather feedback.
Okay, and oftentimes feedback is very subjective and not objective, right?
Could be. Could be.
So that, that's one of the elements I think that comes along with interpreting data is to determine how much of this is being very subjective versus how much of it is objective data that I can take and use to modify whatever is going on. But, and I, and I'm not throwing a finger at you, what I want to know is what as a board, can this board do to improve these numbers for us?
Support the staff, support C and I, support the principals, assistant principals, as we go in and, and provide these, uh, these trainings. We need the support so we can do the best we can for the teachers and for the students.
And can you specifically tell me a little bit more about what you mean by support?
I mean, if something is going on and let's say, for example, if someone comes to you and they say something is going on, you know, let us know so we can go in and fix it or work with it. Just support us and trust that we're going to do hopefully what we should be doing for the teachers and for the students.
Sure.
I think the board made some moves tonight and is making some moves tonight that are going to be very supportive for us.
You think they are?
I believe so.
Okay, we'll discuss that after the meeting, okay? Uh, but, but Dr. Reynolds, I do want to thank you for this advanced ed, uh, presentation. I think it's very critical for this board to be very familiar with what this advanced ed certification is going to look like and very knowledgeable so that as we are interviewed possibly by some of these, uh, the, the surveys, so to speak, that we will have, we will be able to respond to some of their concerns with a knowledge, with a knowledge base. But I, I, I do want to also say that, that, um, the surveys, and I've looked at all of them, the teachers, the parents, the support staff, the entire document, overall, I think it's an outstanding document and it does lead to show us that we are doing some good things in Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet. It's my turn. I'm sorry. I promised to be a little short, though. Um, are we showing the student surveys to the teachers and the staff?
Yes.
The results?
Yes. Outstanding because the one thing that, there was two things that actually piqued my interest and, um, obviously everybody thinks that they're doing an awesome job. So seventy-one percent of our students say that they are having respectful interactions with their teachers, but only fifty-fourth feel that their teachers are honest. And that's a huge concern to me because you have to buy into your teacher and what they're teaching you. Um, and then the other thing that I did have great concern in, and I would like to be able to tease out the numbers of the three through fifth grade versus the upper grades with the, am I expected to be good at something?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that's really going to hit on some other issues that may look, roll into their learning as well and some of the other things that have been presented. So those were my only thoughts and questions for later when I kind of dig through the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to move now to our individual or groups who wish to appear before the board. Mr. Smith?
The Wayne County Board of Education requests to appear before the board. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. If you wish to appear before the board, please review the following procedures. Appearance request forms are available to the public at the reception desk in the lobby thirty minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located at the receptionist's desk in the lobby. The basket will be collected at five P.M. and only those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at five thirty P.M. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The chairman, chairperson shall call time on any presentation which exceeds the three-minute time limit. Organizations or groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time of each individual or to use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of their organization or group. Substitute speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. No presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comments regarding the conduct or performance of identified school personnel. No presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under state and federal privacy laws. Now, there's a handout for this first one, so go this way, this way. The first, um, comment will come from Mr. Barry Merrill. Um, he's representing the Southern Wayne High School and his topic is Southern Wayne High School Classroom Gyms and Teacher Bonus.
Wayne County has a history of, of promising new facilities south of the river, but for years, money has run out before it gets there. Eighteen years ago, Southern Wayne, uh, was told they would have to, uh, wait to get a new gym like CBA in Rosewood. Uh, it was not, no, it was not surprising when this board came up with a, a facility plan for the county commissioners five years ago. Uh, and yet again, there was no money in the, in the foreseeable future for a gym for, for, uh, Southern Wayne. CBA in Rosewood had theirs and, and we have other more important priorities. Well, thanks to our county commissioner from Southern Wayne, we have the money for a new gym. It was not, it was not surprising to many in Southern Wayne that, uh, that when county commissioners and school board members, uh, will agree that students in Northern Wayne, uh, should not have to, uh, be put in, uh, mobile classrooms. When it came to the, uh, recommended replacement of thirty-year-old, uh, temporary mobile classrooms at Southern Wayne and giving Southern Wayne the quality of athletic facilities that CBA and Rosewood have, we don't have enough money. We in Southern Wayne, uh, found the extra money that was needed. Please don't tell us again that we don't have the votes to get what is right, what, what has been promised. You are a good, you are good people who want to do the right thing for all students in our county. For too long, we have, uh, denied some of the resources and facilities that they need, uh, some students need to succeed. We will continue to be a poor county and a poor county school system if we, uh, continue to act like one, grabbing and, and scratching for, for, uh, only for our own. There is a, there is proposal to offer bonuses to make sure we, we get the staff we need to bring up our low-performing elementary schools. We've seen, um, we've seen some success with that approach and I understand that we have the money to do it. I ask your support, not, uh, I ask your support not just for Southern Wayne kids, but for students, uh, in every school who, um, who are being left behind. Can we afford to lose another generation? Thank you for, uh, representing my grandkids and caring for the, for, for their education.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Sean Hicks. He's representing himself and his topic is public school drop-off times.
Good evening, everybody.
Good day, everyone.
Um, as far as the school drop-off times, um, I would like the board to consider drop-off times, especially at the elementary school level. Um, for instance, with, uh, my son attends Fremont Elementary School and the current time has been changed to ten after eight. Um, the time starts to, as far as getting later for the elementary school kids, you start to impose on employment situations for us as parents. Um, I have to be back in Goldsboro by eight-thirty, um, to be to my employer. Um, my wife has to be at work by seven A.M., um, so I am responsible for dropping off our three children, um, in the mornings, one at daycare, uh, one starting school this year, which may end up going to a separate school. Um, but it, it starts to impose on employment situations. Um, using my example, but I'm sure there are other parents that are in the same situation. Um, but I just want you to consider the earlier drop-off times, especially for the younger children. Um, I'm not going to leave my child at home to attempt to catch a bus on their own, um, and I don't have a situation where I have other people in my life that I can trust or count on to be able to do my responsibilities as a parent. Um, thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Granger, Ray Martin, Senior, uh, representing Carver High School, Carver High School Alumni and Friends Association and his sub-topic is introduction as the twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty new national board president.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's a pleasure to get a chance to meet you. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself. I am running unopposed as the new national board president for the Carver Alumni and Association, Alumni and Friends Association. And, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that in the past, we've had Lynn Henderson as a guest speaker on, on one occasion, and we're looking forward to having Raymond Smith this coming Thursday to address our scholarship program. This year, we're giving out ten two thousand five hundred dollar scholarships, uh, and that's the most that we've ever given. And that's partly due to the class of nineteen sixty-seven, which, not bragging, but I'm a part of that class. Uh, we contributed ten thousand dollars last year to the coffers, uh, so we're able to do that. Um, for those of you that may not, uh, be aware of that program, it's at six o'clock, um, at the Carver Cultural Banquet Hall there on the, of the old Carver campus and, uh, it's open to the public, so you're welcome to come. Also, I would like to note that on October the thirteenth, at three P.M., uh, we have formed a, uh, historical committee and they're making a formal presentation of the history of Carver that dates back to eighteen eighty. Uh, so, um, you will probably be getting a formal invitation, but, uh, just save the date as of now. And, uh, the last thing I would like to say, we as the, uh, as the incoming, right now, I serve as the vice president of the national board, but as the incoming national board president, I just want to find out from you what we can do as alumni to help with the educational process. One of the targets, I shared this with Mr. Henderson, that we're focused on is the, uh, students at risk. Uh, and at the Montala Middle School, we, I was told that there's forty-four students there. And so we have the principal, Ms. Nelson, that's going to address us in August and we're going to try to formulate something. But we have also approached, uh, Mr. Smith at Southern Wayne High School and we've been to the Brogdon Middle School and the Grantham Middle School to, to let them know that we want to focus on students at risk. But we'd need for you to tell us if there's anything else that we can do to make life a little bit more exciting and bearable for, uh, for the students that, particular students at risk. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Well, since you're unopposed, I will take this opportunity to say congratulations on your new assignment. All right. We're going to go to board spotlight. At this time, because, um, we have five minutes before six P.M., I think we need to go ahead on and, and, and go to our board spotlight.
Madam Chair, thank you. And before I do board spotlight, I have asked, uh, our board chair if I could have a few minutes of personal privilege to speak on, uh, speak regarding our board spotlight. I have known the family, uh, for a long time. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, the grandfather of our board spotlight is my second cousin. I didn't want the board to know that because they probably would have turned it down if I'd said anything about it. But, uh, Brandon Lark, Jr. is a very special young man, very special, very special to me. Um, he has been, um, very, very instrumental in things that go on at Brogdon Primary School. And sometimes I even tell Ms. Lynn from the activities and, and things that I have attended at Brogdon Primary School, I sometimes wonder who's in charge, Ms. Lynn or Mr. Lark, because he's always there. He's been a very, very active individual in the school. And to see him, uh, interact in that school and to show the amount of love and support that he has, not only for the students, but for the teachers and the principal as well, should, tells me a whole lot about our students in the southern part of the county. Oftentimes, when we look at the southern part of the county, the things that are being said is, oh, they're low-performing schools. Yes, we are low-performing schools at Brogdon Primary, Brogdon Middle. At the present time, we are. But with the attributes of, of Mr. Brandon B.J. Lark, Jr., we see that not every child is a low-performing child. So we need to dispel the rumor of thinking that everybody that attends a low-performing school is a low-performing individual because that is not the case. Uh, I am particularly pleased with the, the, um, uh, what's the word I want to use? The goals and the things that Mr. B.J. has done. Uh, I had knew his grandmother. His grandmother passed last October, I think it was, this past, October the twelfth. And she was a very instrumental person in B.J.'s life. She, from what I can tell, she has instilled in him, not only she, but his parents as well, have instilled in him that number one virtue, and that is to love thy neighbor as thyself. And it, and that's the reason why, uh, we are honoring this board spotlight tonight because for a nine-year-old who is in the fourth grade, to not think of himself, but to think of others is something that is rare. It's uncommon. And it's something that we as a board, as a community, as a state, need to begin to recognize because all too often, we hear of all the negative things that go on in our society and we fail to recognize the good things that are going on. So I made a personal plea to the Board Chairman. I said, please, whatever you do, let me, allow me an opportunity to nominate this individual for our Board Spotlight for this year. And our Board Spotlight is no one other than Brandon B.J. Lark. And I'm going to ask Brandon, B.J. Lark, and his family, Mother Rashina, Father Brandon Senior, Grandfather Anthony Lynn, and any others who would like to stand with him as I present this award to him, to please come forward. Oh, yeah, I forgot Ms. Lynn and also Ms. Kenan and, and I think that's his grandmother, other grandmother right back here. And he also has some church members. If y'all are coming, just stand straight up here. Mr. Lark is a rising fourth grader at Brogdon Primary. We are recognizing this young man for his special achievements of raising over nineteen hundred dollars for his school. And let me say that B.J., when he initially started this plan, he only had a goal of raising two hundred and fifty dollars. Once he raised that, he said, Mama, I can't stop now. He then set another goal of five hundred dollars. That goal had been surpassed. He raised, he set his goal at a thousand dollars. And as, as I already told you, he has surpassed that goal as well. And his goal is to raise now five thousand dollars for our Wayne County teachers. It is important to note that his contribution was born not out of any school or community-led fundraiser. He has raised his money all on his own. His fundraiser was born out of the simple idea that he could help ease the burdens for teachers who were dipping into their own pockets just for classroom supplies. In recent weeks, Mr. Lark has applied a philanthropic and entrepreneurial spirit to raising funds for his school. In addition to getting one of his parents to launch an online fundraising page, he began selling lemonade and Beanie Babies. And amazingly, Mr. Lark, B.J., was able to secure a donation of over two thousand licensed T.Y. Beanie Babies to be used for his fundraiser. One hundred percent of his donations and his sales will go directly to teachers to purchase their classroom supplies. Interestingly, Mr. Lark's original goal was raised to just raise a few hundred dollars for his school. However, since he launched his campaign, community support has helped him surpass all of his initial goals and he is now working to raise five thousand dollars and it is in hopes to expand his efforts not only for Brogdon Primary School, but for his sister school, Brogdon Middle School as well. So Mr. Lark, B.J., on behalf of the Board, we thank you for all your efforts to support the Brogdon area teachers and we commend you for the character you have demonstrated throughout this fundraiser. And today, we'd like to acknowledge that the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Brandon Lark Junior for raising over, it says twelve hundred dollars, but we know you raised more than that. To assist teachers in purchasing their classroom supplies, given this day, June the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. I do not have it signed by our chair yet, but I'm going to have that done before you leave out of here, okay? So I, again, would like to applaud the president for instilling respect. I'd like to, more importantly, also recognize his mother, Rashina Lark, and his father, Brandon Lark, and his grandmother and grandfather for all of their support, for without their support, none would be evident. So thank you, Brandon. And I want to give all the people a little round of applause and all the members of the Board of Education. And before we do that, Rashina, I would like for you to come up here and let them know what is the GoFundMe page, so that anybody that might be here today might be also willing to contribute.
Hello, everyone. The GoFundMe page is actually Teacher's School Supply Drive and you just click, you go to the GoFundMe.com and just enter Teacher's School Supply Drive and you'll see Brandon with his Beanie Babies. And we're actually having a Beanie Baby sale this Friday at five o'clock, five to eight P.M. We offer free lemonade, water, and he also gives everybody a friendship bracelet because he says he's making friends along the way. So hopefully, we'll see some of you Friday from five to eight P.M. at one oh nine Glenwood Trail, Goldsboro.
And if you can't make it there, you can go to the GoFundMe page. All right, Brandon, if you would, we're ready.
Good job.
Very proud of you, sir.
That was amazing job, nice job.
What's up, Phil?
That's amazing. I know you're all proud, that's incredible. Y'all are doing a good job, congratulations. Yes, they find you a manager.
They're coming today.
Congratulations, you're an amazing young man. Congratulations, now you're proud. Congratulations. You don't necessarily have to award this young, it's amazing, congratulations. Congratulations, you guys. Y'all take them out to dinner now, congratulations, exactly.
So if I send you a donation, you would get it, do you? Okay, I don't mind.
Now get more straight from me. GoFundMe takes a percent, so it's better to send them a check.
Yes. At this time, we will have a facilities update.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Dunsmore. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on some facility items that have gone through our committee. At your desk, you should have an orange folder, I'd love to start out, excuse me, with an update on Southern Wayne High School and Northwest. I apologize for these documents not being in Board Docs, I wasn't able to meet the deadline, so that's my fault there, but thank you for this opportunity. What you have in your folder, as we're moving through the process of preparing to bid out Southern Wayne High School and Northwest Elementary School addition, you have a new floor plan for the gymnasium. I actually just received this yesterday, so our facilities committee has not had the opportunity to look at it yet, but this is a more detailed floor plan of the gymnasium, so you can see the locker installations, the bathrooms, as well as the training rooms and the locker room area for the referees and officials. So I wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to share a couple pages. The next page, which looks a little more crew, that's actually a drawing that the civil architect has done as I met with him on-site at Southern Wayne High School. And what you'll see there is if you'll flip it where the proposed gym site is located, the red line, the reason I wanted to share that with you is right now, we're in the process of having the civil site survey done at both Southern Wayne High School and at both Northwest Elementary School. Civil site surveys, you're probably aware, has to be done to locate our stormwater drains, our sewage, our electrical, any utilities that we may have. So that will be done inside that red line, so we have a very large area that will be surveyed before we actually physically place the gymnasium where it's going to be on-site. That's very, very important, because obviously, we'll also do calculations on how much area of the gym, as well as the classroom additions, will cover at Northwest as well as Southern Wayne, because we have to calculate for stormwater runoff and things like that. Our timeline currently for this and looking at bid is we are pushing very hard to have this go-to bid by the end of July. That is our goal. We have two survey crews going, one for Southern Wayne High School and one for Northwest, to make that happen as quickly as we can on that. Also, I have spoken with Mr. Rayner, the owner of Triangle Timber East, just to let you know, he and I have talked almost regularly about this process. This site survey has to have a topographical map done to actually look at the elevations of the site to determine what grading will have to be done once our addition go into both locations. So he, before the timber comes out, so it doesn't make it a little messy to get this done, we're having someone come in, clear the underbrush, so that the land is not disturbed, for lack of better words, before the trees are taken out. Mr. Rayner has ensured me that he'll get that out. If not, if we push a little late, he will come and cut out the section where the gym will sit to make sure that is out. He did do as we ask in facilities, he has included an overcut in the contract. And I have seen that contract, it has been given to me, and I have asked for one edit as a sentence was duplicated and returned that back to his representative. And when I get that, I will refer it to our board attorney for legal approval with that. So if you have any questions about Southern Wayne before I move to the next item or Northwest, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Dr. Harold, is Mr. Rayner, will he be able to get the timber out before you do the topo?
No, sir, because what we had, as we're trying to rush it so fast to get this done and have this put to bid by the end of July, the concern was, was that if Mr. Rayner began, it would hinder our surveyor from getting in that location. So we're going to have the topo and the civil survey done first and just as soon as that out, Mr. Rayner has instructed me to please let him know, so he can prepare to get that out.
I've done quite a bit of that kind of work and the topo is actually a lot easier to do with the timber removed, because the timber's not restricting it, so, but we don't want to hold a project.
Yes, sir. One of the concerns from the site surveyor was that if, when the timber process started and how close it was on the window, as well as there may be, you know, some debris or tops left, it might make it harder for him to get through the area. Yes, sir, other questions before I move to the next item? Okay, you have Northwest as well, that's going to make sure you'll see Northwest with those and inside again, the red area there, the very last sheet is where we'll be doing the civil survey. Northwest will be a little easier as we do not have any standing timber on-site to work through there. We will have to potentially look at moving and relocating some stormwater drains on the, if you're familiar with that campus, potentially where the ball fields are located, it'll be at the top of your sheet. And we also will have to look at relocating the driveway that as you enter the campus on the bottom right side, as the proposed additions will go through that area. So again, once we have this site survey prepared, I will bring that back to facilities so they can have a look at that. Again, our goal for these projects, Southern Wayne first, as we're trying to prioritize there, while we're working as well with Northwest to get that done. So I wanted you to be aware of where we are in case you have any questions from anyone. If you have no questions there, I'll move to my next update item. Just wanted to make all of you aware, at the last board meeting, thank you for approving us being able to take the air conditions out of the mobile units at the mobiles that are at Spring Creek High School and move those to the ag shop as well as the automotive shop at Charles Bedcock High School. We went out, maintenance turned the electrical on to those units to check those. Unfortunately, both of the units in the mobile that we were going to move, there's two mobiles, two of the air conditioning units were non-operative, they'd been sitting so long. One was still operative, but the concern is since it's so old, we may not be able to get parts. So I am going to get quotes and bids on the potential of putting in new units in the FFA shop, agriculture shop, as well as automotive shop. So I wanted you to know that and I'll bring that to facilities when I have them. Also, Eastern Wayne High School bleachers, to let you know there, we have had the legal review of the contract for that. The bleachers have been removed from Eastern Wayne High School and it looks really good. I've contacted maintenance about painting the walls while the bleachers are out and the installation of that is scheduled between August first and August thirteenth for our new bleachers. Those bleachers have been ordered and as you're probably aware, they have to be specially made depending on the gym and have those put in. They'll arrive sometime August first in boxes and will be staged on the floor in the gym and then assembled there. I wanted you to be aware of that as we're moving forward. Also, tennis courts, had a question about that. I have been contacted, contacted Court One per legal review and advice from our attorney, looking at the general contractor conditions they sent to me. There's a clause in there about arbitration and as I was advised, our legal representation, that is something that since we're a government entity, would not be in good faith, so I've asked them to remove that clause to get that back to me. And I've also sent with them our general conditions contract to have them sign it and as soon as that is signed, I will work with them to schedule a time to have our courts at Charles Bedcock and Rosewood High School repaired as soon as possible, because I know that our fall sports seasons are upon us. I want to make you aware of one last item at Eastern Wayne High School. We had some moisture damage that happened to the basketball court at Eastern Wayne High School. This, I believe, happened about five years ago as well and the gym floor was repaired. What we had was the drain pan in the air conditioning units in the roof of the facility. The gym was built somewhere in seventy-six, seventy-seven, so the air conditioning units are in the roof. The drain pan overflowed, the condensation ran down into the ductwork and then cascaded onto the floor. If you're familiar with the floor at Eastern Wayne High School, it's what's called a bulldog lock system. The floor is installed in concrete, it's not a floating floor. It's the same kind of floor we have at Spring Creek High School. So the floor is actually pinned in between the concrete and not allowed to float. So the water has gotten underneath the floor and I've had two people look at it so far. I've got three more. I've got one coming tomorrow and have one coming Friday that we're going to meet to look at the potential repair of the floor. I have a concern right now that the floor is not safe around Center Court for volleyball season. One of the vendors that looked at it recommended that we go ahead and have maintenance potentially remove the spot that has buckled or come up. It has about twenty-one percent moisture in it right now, which is way too high for wood. And the moisture's trapped on top of the concrete underneath the floor. So I might look and talk to maintenance and get some direction from our facilities committee on having us go ahead and remove that spot, because the concern is, as we move through our process of getting quotes and bids and then getting it approved, that the moisture damage may increase. And by the time a quote is done, when they come, there might be more than needs to be taken out than what was quoted at the time, if that makes sense. So I want to make you aware of that situation at Eastern Wayne High School. The air conditioning units, I've been assured, have been fixed. We have now have a float system installed in the drain pan, so when the water level increases, it should turn off the unit and not happen, because this will be the second time, I think, in five years that it's happened.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
We're able to, to repair that area without damage to the entire floor?
Yes, ma'am. So what will have to happen, Madam Chair, is we'll, the location itself is a little below Center Court on the, not the side that the teams would sit, the side that's more spectators would sit and the cheerleaders, so we can take that section out. The issue we have with this floor is this floor, very good system, it's, it's one of the better systems you can have, keeping it dry, moisture away from it. So as the water has gotten underneath it and it's caused it to buckle or to convex, it's actually coming up, the boards are bowing themselves. It was repaired five years ago. What they have to do is it has rails on the concrete that the wood is attached to, where a traditional floor might have a wood subfloor that you would, just like your house, you would attach the wood to. So they had to take that area up, cut off the rails to the floor and then put down plywood to have something to screw the wood to. The repair that was done five years ago was done beautifully, it looks great, you can't even tell it was done. Unfortunately, it's gotten wet this time. So what we'll have to do, Madam Chair, is take that spot up, it can be repaired, and then the whole floor will have to be sanded and relined.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
Is that the same spot that we had to repair five years ago?
Yes, sir, it is. And my, my goal or hope this time, Mr. Henderson, is that the float system inside the drain pan has resolved that and then maybe some preventative maintenance before the units are turned on to check the drain lines, will eliminate that in the future. Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We at the point where we need to approve the agenda?
Madam Chairman, we do have three items that we need to add to the agenda. If you would, please, we could go with letter If you would please, we could go with letter G for an asbestos abatement. Letter H is the Navigate Prepared Program. And then finally, letter I is a resolution for the agricultural program for the state legislature.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the modifications, ma'am.
Second. Second, okay. Any concerns or discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. We need to approve the minutes for May 1st, 2018. I need a motion.
Try move.
Second. All right. All, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes for the May 1st, 2018 meetings, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. I need to approve, I need a motion to approve the minutes for May 18th, 2018.
Try move.
All right. I have a first.
Yeah.
I have a second. All right, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. And now I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes for May 18th, 2018. And that will be open minutes?
If it's a closed session, you have to decide whether you want to release them.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes and release them from the May 18th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
All right. All, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, number E, and I think that will be addressed by Dr. Dunsmore.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. This came out of our student assignment committee. As you know, we've been doing a lot of work on student assignments. The McKibben demographic research, what I'm asking for, actually, Mr. Schwartz had recommended this gentleman and his firm. As you're aware, we had had an Evergreen study done years ago that was quite expensive, and I'm not even sure they're still doing those. We had reached out to NC State, who does some similar work, and they're about two years behind. Mr. McKibben did a similar program in Union County, and I believe Catawba County was the other one. I had a chance to speak with him and Mr. Schwartz via the phone, tried to get some information. He is available to come to our next July board meeting and do a presentation on what he would come in and do. He did do a price projection there for us also. I also might want to add, he had looked at the information Dr. Lewis and I had sent in that he requested. It's a little preliminary work, and was quite impressed with what that committee had done to this point. And it actually is reflected in the cost, it's a little bit less than what the original price was. But all I'm asking for tonight is approval to go ahead and allow him to come here and do his presentation and as long as we're on board with that. He shared his turnaround would be very, very quick because a lot of the work would be information we will provide here that he can be working on on his own, as well as the time he would spend here in the county.
Okay, I need a motion to have Dr. McKibben come to our July meeting to discuss his services.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to know this information that he's going to glean. Dr. Dunsmore, what are your plans for what you're going to do with this information if we decide to approve?
Well, ultimately, what we're looking at is filling empty space and capacity at our buildings and the plan for, as we have to adjust attendance lines to achieve that ultimate goal.
Way back, I remember the Evergreen study and the amount, I think it was $100,000 the county commissioners paid for that study. Beg pardon?
$125,000.
I stand corrected, $125,000. That's a big difference. But anyway, it was a big number. And it was a very, I've read it, not word for word, but I have read it. And it was a very broad, sort of information, bit of information about a lot of different subjects. Now, this, this information we're asking for here with this demographic, this is going to be specific to demographic lines in the county and population schools.
Yes, sir.
Because the other report, it went all into the number of personnel we needed, number of maintenance people, I mean, it was just, and it was almost, I don't know how much, Mr. Pridgen was on the Board of Education at the time. I don't know how much information that the Board of Education took and used out of that, but it didn't seem like it was a lot. So, Dr. Dunsmore, do you feel like that, that your staff and the folks we have on board with the information that we have could make these kind of decisions without hiring outside counsel?
I think it's always good to bring outside eyes in to look at that and know those trends. One of the things in speaking with the superintendent at Union County, went through this, their staff, they felt it an awful lot of work and missed some things. I think the exact term used was missed the forest because some trees got in the way. And I know Mr. Schwartz, in speaking with him, who has been involved with this outfit and went through these, have been very impressed with what they bring to the table.
Well, Mr. Henderson and I were speaking, and we spoke with Mr. Schwartz, and he told us he knew of it. He didn't mention a name, but he knew of a company that was good at this. But is this something that we would need to consider getting bids from other people on? There is a GIS operation right here across from the Y, I can't remember the name of the company, but I know they do demographic information. I'm asking you.
If the board would like me to do that, I'm comfortable in speaking with Mr. or Dr. McKibben. I've spoken to the folks out at NC State that do this, and were involved in other processes. And one of the things that everybody said, it's always good to get somebody that's not vested in the area to come in and do these studies because it can be very objective.
I have a question, if you're finished.
No, I have no other question.
Is there a RFP or a scope that they will be using in order to conduct the study by? Is it something specific we've asked them to do?
That's what I came up, and what he would come up and bring up, we talked to him, what our goals are, what we are doing with the moratorium in getting students back to their domiciles, which was something that he highlighted was a first step. We gave him a lot of the information that we've been working on in the student reassignment committees. So, that's what he's coming up to talk to, what he can do specifically in line with the work we've been doing in that committee.
So, from that conversation, we're going to develop the scope? And at that point, would it be, and Arnold, I'm talking to you now, at that point, once the scope is developed, at that point, would it be prudent to talk about going out to bids based on that developed scope? Arnold, did you?
I did. I thought, I thought you were asking that of Dr. Dunsmore.
No, I'm talking to you because you brought up the bids, you know, looking at other, looking at other options.
I, I haven't been privileged, I'm not on the committee, so I haven't been privileged to the discussion. As you and everybody else in Wayne County, I guess, know, I've been an advocate for a school district line ever since I've been on the board. And so many times in my career it involved things, if you want nothing to happen, you get a consultant and you go ahead into a committee. I want something to happen. So, my reservations to that, I mean, that's what they are. I don't want to waste a lot of time, spend a lot of money. To be honest with you, I think I could sit down with the maps and start to begin to make improvements. I've suggested, I did at our last meeting, clear things where you can make improvements on our district lines as we speak. But if this is, I mean, I'll certainly submit to the collective wisdom of the board, I want to do this. If this is a legitimate step and we're actually trying to make something happen, then I'm all for it.
Dr. Dunsmore, this gentleman that is coming, he is coming to talk to us about what he would do? What services he would provide, okay?
And I was just going to, and I apologize, Mr. Smith, I might have misunderstood. So, he listed some areas that he's really going to zero in on as a basis for that study, and he will talk in more detail. And I guess if we want to broaden that scope, I'm going to have to reach back out to him on that. Obviously, I was trying to keep it to the specifics that we are working on. I know time is of an essence with opening a new school next year and some of the overcrowding issues we're facing.
But would it be fitting for us to have him come and speak to us and then go out to bid, to see who would bid for this job, or?
It would probably be better to bid prior to. I'm just not sure who else we would send out to that other than, I can reach out to the company Mr. Flowers suggested at the YMCA.
Madam Chair.
At the YMCA.
Mr. Har, Dr. Harold, am I putting you on the spot to ask you if you know of any other agencies that we would send out a bid request for?
I'm happy to assist, Dr. Dunsmore, if you'd please.
But you don't know of any, right?
No, no, ma'am, I may be familiar with an agency that refused a prior position, but I came back home.
Okay. Leanne, I'm sorry, I mean, Mr. Henderson, I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Chair. I have gone online and looked at the website for McKibben Demographic Research, and I have noted that there has been several counties in North Carolina in which they have done some work for. My concern is if we were to put out a RFP or put it out for bid right now without hearing his presentation, it might put us at a disadvantage because there are things that may come up during his presentation that may not even be included in this, in this proposal here. So, my, my suggestion would be that we wait and listen to the presentation and then determine from that whether or not it would be even necessary to go out and place it out for a, for a bid. I would also like to also ask, while we're talking about this, one of the things I would like to ask the board members to do is if you remember back a few months, I guess it's been seven, eight months ago, when we first started talking about redistricting, I sent out a, I sent out to each board member a copy of the best practices in district rezoning research. Before Mr. McKibben's come, I would ask us to just read that in particular to kind of get ourselves ready for that presentation because it might lead to some discussions that we might need to take further.
Do you have the ability to send that out again?
I'll check and see. If not, I do have it here, and I could give it to Dr. Dunsmore and have him to have it copied and sent out to everybody.
All right, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify myself here, I've talked around in the circle, I guess. I'm all for hearing this gentleman's presentation and moving, moving forward with this. It's just, it appears from what I'm looking at here, if he comes and gives the presentation, he's going to be coming expecting to get a contract. And when I hear his presentation, I might be all for giving him a contract. And that's the reason I said I respect the collective wisdom of the board on that at that time. So, I'm all, I'm all for hearing his presentation, but I also want to articulate for, that me as a board member, I want to go with this, okay?
And just for point of clarification too, I know I asked a question about RFPs and scopes. This, in reading this again, it does appear to be a response to an RFP. And my question about scope now becomes even more prevalent. What was the scope of work that he was given in order to develop this proposal? That's, I guess that's kind of where I'm at. And is the same scope available to send out to other potential bidders for the same project? Is there, is there a written scope?
There wasn't a written scope. It was a conversation between Mr. Schwartz, Dr. McKibben, and myself after I had spoke to the superintendent in Union County. And basically, the foundation of it was, as we talked, what they went through, we have aging buildings. We have buildings that are sitting empty but aren't in the area that we need to be. Everything we had talked about, he understood, realized what it was. Hey, this is what I do, this is what I've done here. I went and looked at some of those work that he's done. So, it's really focused in on that, but there was nothing specifically written. I reached out to the companies that I was aware of and speaking to others that have done some things, but we can certainly broaden that. I, quite frankly, when I spoke to what the charge was to Union County, I was pleasantly surprised because I knew what the cost of the Evergreen study was, and this gentleman's doing these nationally, not just in North Carolina.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the Evergreen study myself, but you're right, the Evergreen study was comprehensive. This is very specific. So, I would imagine that it would be considerably less expensive. But, but it does concern me that there is no written scope for him to follow or so.
Madam Chair, can we have a reread of the motion in the second that are on the floor?
There isn't.
There is an motion.
Yes, there was.
There was.
There's a motion in a second. I made the motion, Arnold.
And I made, and I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's specific, I'm pretty sure, to just a presentation.
The motion was to hear it here, as presented, was that he come and make a presentation to us on what the scope of his work would be.
Okay, so that was your motion?
And I made it.
And you seconded it.
And Dr. Dunsmore, did he agree to come do a presentation without it being within contract?
I will have to reach out to him. I'm assuming we're going to have to pay his expenses to come in, which I would hope would be minimal because he's just over the South Carolina line.
So, would it be appropriate to ask for, I don't want to use, what's the not amendment, what's the word I'm looking for, Mr. Smith?
Clarification.
Clarification of the motion pending cost of the presentation as well as asking any other companies that may want to present as well at the July meeting because I'm happy to have them come in unless they're going to charge us a couple of thousand dollars for that presentation. I mean, so, Mr. Flowers, would you mind if I add that to the motion? I mean, amend it, depend, as long as their proposal is under, do we want a cost?
I think you need to put a cost.
A cap.
Right.
I believe it's even reasonable.
Well, if you notice down here, he says that to do a presentation for its final forecast is going to be $950. So, if you say a thousand dollars, I'm sure that should be reasonable because the, the presentation that he would make final will be more in depth, more in depth than what he would do coming down here for just a general presentation.
I would almost at this point rather not ask for an amendment, but to go ahead and call a question and then restate from the beginning.
I'll restate the motion. That's what you asked, Mr. Trick.
I think with a motion and a second, we actually have to vote on it.
One way or the other.
We still have some discussion.
You had a lot of discussion.
Dr. Dunsmore, let me ask you a question. Have there been any provisions or anything, I mean, I would love to talk to people in Union County or some of these counties that he's, he's done this myself, okay? But has there been any provisions for us to send anybody there to sit down and talk with them and actually see what was done in those particular counties? Or have, other than you just speaking to a representative, I don't even know whether they were pleased or not with his work. And that's, I mean, I'd like to dig a little bit deeper.
Yeah, I can get that in.
Yeah, I can get that information. I can get it out to the board members. I can have that.
I don't think he would have told you that he worked with those counties if he hadn't done a good job.
They're actually, they're actually listed on his website.
And I have a video of the board meeting that he actually did a presentation and I watched.
All right. Do we have a clarification of the motion at this time?
Or it's a vote up and down, either or.
So do we need to vote the motion down that we have on the floor and then come back and restate it?
Why can't I just restate the motion now?
You can, or we can withdraw the current motion, ask to withdraw the current motion. You could ask to withdraw the current motion and start a new motion.
But you'd have to get the withdrawal of the second as well, but.
All right, I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
All right.
I move that we ask this gentleman to come and do his presentation, that we be willing to compensate him for his reasonable expenses. That reasonable amount be to be determined by the superintendent. And that his, if we enter a contract with him, that the fee we pay for coming for this presentation would be deducted from his contract amount.
What?
He's got a contract amount in there. Twenty-six, nine hundred. If we're gonna give him nine hundred to come present, I want him to deduct it from that amount.
Did his contract price include a presentation?
Well, he was coming to make one.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I think he would, coming up the twenty-third was probably part of that overall cost. So if we do hire him, we deduct.
If we give him nine hundred for coming now, his contract cost, projected cost is twenty-six, nine hundred, then it would be deducted from his original contract price, whatever his fee to come up here.
Understood.
Yeah.
All right.
You understand my motion?
That's contingent on the board approving him, the way you're speaking to the motion.
He's just saying if he is contracted.
If he is granted a contract, so that is our vote.
But suppose he is not contracted?
Then we owe him the nine hundred dollars.
We're gonna pay a reasonable expenses for coming.
And that's it.
I'll second his motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor of having Dr. McKibben come to make a presentation to us with a fee that will be determined by the superintendent? Please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Same? All right. Now, are we gonna do this during a board meeting or a?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, during a board meeting. Okay. And this will be only be one person or are we gonna look for others? We're gonna start with this gentleman?
I'm gonna start looking for others and I'll do that starting tomorrow.
Okay.
But you're not gonna be asking others to come at the time he does his presentation?
I think it's gonna be highly unlikely we'll get somebody that quick.
And I would say because of the fact that we want to know the whole scope of what he's going to do before we start inviting other folks in here.
Okay. All right, now we have a CTE Memorandums of Understanding.
Madam Chair, as, while Ms. Bolton House is walking up, one MOU I am asking be pulled from the agenda. The Bryan Center Health and Rehabilitation Center in Goldsboro received a Medicare/Medicaid survey that was conducted. They were issued a deficiency. We had gotten contact from the State Department of Health and Human Services that we're no longer allowed to use that facility because of their deficiency rating. So we do not need to enter in an MOU with them. So rather than four, there will be just three.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Bolton House.
Would you have MOUs with Willow Creek and RHA Health Services and with Wayne Memorial Hospital for our health science classes? And then we also have one with Grantham Fire Department for EMS program, which is the one that we just approved back in February for this past spring semester. But these are, we're requesting that they be approved by the board attorney first because I've been communicating back with Laura Crumpler with Schwartz and Shaw today. And so your approval should be pending their review because they've not been reviewed by our new attorney.
All right, so we need a motion to approve these Memorandums of Understanding.
Pending legal review.
Pending legal review.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, do we have to say anything about the fact that we are removing Bryan Center?
Your motion would just be to approve the four.
All right. So I need a motion to approve the four agencies pending legal review.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve memorandum of understanding with the four that were mentioned. Master affiliation agreement, also the RHA Health Services, the Grantham Fire Department, and Willow Creek. And pending legal review.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I'd like first to pull up the master affiliation for Wayne Memorial Hospital agreement. And I would like, first of all, to go to Article One, Section B. Why would, why, all right, let me ask this question this way. Would, is the hospital gonna be providing any kind of clinical training itself?
Yes, sir. They, it's more supervision because our faculty, they have to be the certified nurses, which they are. And we have two different levels that go to the hospital. One is the CNA class and then the other is the Health Science One and the Health Science Two classes when they just go to observe and they don't have the number of hours or the in-depth training.
Okay, so we would not be relying on hospital staff to provide any kind of clinical training?
Not with the Health, with the CNA, no.
How about with the other?
Well, they're, the nurses and the doctors that are there, they are providing examples, so instruction.
The reason I ask that is because this statement makes it sound like only the schools are gonna be providing training.
In the rest of the agreement, when it term, when the term faculty is used, they're talking about our staff.
Right, and even in this one, it's talking about just our staff.
Correct, but in the rest of the agreement, it will talk about hospital staff. They don't term the hospital staff as faculty.
Okay, okay. Okay. Article Three, professional liability. Can you speak to that? What?
We have, every year, the Board of Education approves the insurance policies. And then whenever these MOUs are approved, then I contact Phyllis and Phyllis will send the names of the individual companies and they have a rider and a policy that we provide with these companies.
So we provide the insurance that?
Yes, sir.
They don't have to provide the insurance?
No, sir.
Okay. Article Three, where it talks about criminal background checks in all states?
Which one is that? A, B, C, or D?
I think it's K on page three. And that is for, not the students who are doing the job shadowing, but the ones who are doing the CNA.
The CNA?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, let me ask you a question with that one. Because it says such criminal background checks have to conduct in all state countries where the student faculty has lived, worked, or gone to school either within the past ten years or from the date that the assigned individual turned eighteen years of age. So if I were, if I was in that program and I turned eighteen years old tomorrow, how much of a background check are you doing?
It would be ten years. And very few of the students that are doing the CNA are already eighteen.
So you don't have CNAs that are seniors?
Yes, sir, but like I said, it's, you know, half and half. Some are eighteen already and some aren't. Not all of them are eighteen. But when they're doing the CNA, they're having a background check.
But see, the question that it raises for me is that last phrase, or from the date that the assigned individual turned eighteen years of age, whichever is shorter.
Shorter.
So if I turn eighteen tomorrow, it would be shorter?
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Bolton House?
Yes, sir.
Are these the same basic agreements we've always, that we've agreed on?
Yes, sir.
Has anything changed in any of them?
The only one that has changed is Wayne Memorial because they're now with UNC Healthcare. And so theirs has, you know, a few more of their agreements and forms, the appendixes, appendices, that they want signed this time by the students that are in the CNA program.
Thank you.
I noticed it also says that HIPAA training is provided by the hospital. But how about the OSHA and the bloodborne pathogens and those, are they provided by our clinical staff, our faculty?
Those are provided to the Health Science Two before they go into the CNA. And all of our students are able to do the ten-hour OSHA training and that's one of the credentials that we provide.
So that's done before they could even go to the hospital?
Well, it's done for all of our Health Science Two, whether they're intending to go to the hospital or not. Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, we need a motion to approve.
We already have one.
Got a motion.
Oh, we have a motion?
That was your discussion.
Oh, that was my discussion, I'm sorry. All right, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to address Item G, please, on your agenda that was added.
Okay.
You have a manila folder that looks like mine, excuse me, and in order, you should have, I have a blue sticky note on the first paper clipped items together. The top one says Empuricon. So this is coming to you from the Facilities Committee. If you may recall, in February of this year, we had a water line to rupture under the floor of the weight room slash wrestling room at Eastern Wayne High School. So we were able to get that cleaned out, get the water out of it, and we had to take in three bids for the asbestos abatement. The floor there at Eastern Wayne High School has VCT tile over an asbestos subfloor. The building was the old New Hope High School cafeteria when it was built. So these bids here, I put them in order. The top bid is a low bid from Empuricon for abating three thousand four hundred and seventy square feet at a cost of sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. And this comes to you in recommendation from the Facilities Committee to approve the low bid for Empuricon. So if you could please approve that, I would greatly appreciate it.
I move that we accept the low bid.
I second.
Any discussion?
Just for both of them or just for?
Just for Eastern Wayne.
This is just for Eastern Wayne?
Okay.
I guess the attachments are the other agencies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so the first one is the sixteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Three hundred and twenty dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion? So we're ready for the vote? All in favor? I don't see the name of the company.
Empuricon is at the top of the first page.
Okay. Empuricon Incorporated. All in favor of approving, accepting the bid from Empuricon Incorporated for Eastern Wayne High School? Indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next package you have there with another blue sticky note is for Fremont Stars Elementary School. Just want to point out a few differences in there, but all these are exactly the same. So at Fremont, we have three areas that we have some asbestos that needs to be abated. Of course, this is in the nineteen twenty-three building at Fremont Stars. There is an admin office up front, and I've highlighted those for you on the first page of Empuricon's. There's also a break room. There's a break room downstairs that has black and white nine-by-nine square asbestos tile. And then there is a room upstairs that is used as a break room or lounge upstairs that has the original tile, which is, I believe, red and green. Now, if you'll, just want to denote a square footage difference you may see there. I had a question asked from Empuricon as to why there's one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet to be abated. And when you were to look at the next one for, or the very last one, excuse me, with square footage, which would be Dory, they did two thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, and of course, their price is higher. So what we have at Fremont Stars on the bottom floor of the building in the break room and administrative office is that floor has two floors down. It has two layers of nine-by-nine asbestos tile. So the higher bid and the difference in the square footage is they doubled the square footage for those two rooms downstairs. Empuricon's gonna take both those out at the same time. So that's where you'll see the difference in the square footage there. So this comes from Facilities Committee asking approval to accept Empuricon's bid so we can begin the process of abating at Fremont Stars Elementary School.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the Empuricon bid for the asbestos abatement at Fremont Elementary.
I second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Was yours in opposed?
I'm sorry?
Was yours in opposed?
No.
No, sir.
He voted late. We got it in.
Madam Chairman, for Item H in your manila folder, the very last packet is the Navigate proposal that Dr. Dunsmore will raise.
We had the folks from Navigate come up and do a presentation. Mr. Henderson was there. I've reached out to other companies, none of which could get this done by the start of the school year. Their price was not in line with where we were at and they didn't meet all the areas that Navigate brought. As you know, we had our statewide meetings and we are eligible for grant. And speaking with Dr. Ben Matthews at DPI, he's suggesting there's several counties here east of ninety-five that are gonna go with this program. In order to get these grants moving and approved, that we have to be on the books and roll with them. So I'm very hopeful. The startup fee, which is on the page two, number three A, will be covered by the grant. We're gonna be asking in a grant for about four times that much. And it has to all be, the grant requirements are very specific to hardware, stuff. So we're going to be looking at camera upgrades, tape monitors and swipe cards as well as this Navigate program. But to get on their calendar so we can get the training and be ready to go for the start of the school year, I am asking the board to approve this contract.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with that Navigate for the security matters.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I will, I can speak to it. I will speak to the fact that I did attend the presentation that was done by Navigate. I was very impressed by their delivery and all of the services that they would be able to provide for us, including the issue of mapping out every room in every school, giving us a three hundred and sixty-degree view of what those rooms would look like. So in case of emergencies and these atrocities that we've been having lately in the schools across the county, I mean, across the country, we will be better prepared to address those issues in a more timely manner.
Okay. I have a question, Dr. Dunsmore. Could you re, address again how we're going to pay for this?
So the General Assembly and the Governor has freed up safety and security money. It's a big pot of money. So the way the DPI is doing that is an ADM per student amount. So we're, we're gonna have to have all the grant work in. We started that work this weekend. So we're, we're going to have to have all the grant work in, we started that work this weekend. We have to have it in by the second week of July, and then we'll have the money hopefully prior to the start of the school.
Would be that be ninety-six thousand dollars or more?
We're hoping that about four times is that.
Four times that, okay.
As much, yes. Based on our ADMs and the projections, we're going to be eligible somewhere around four hundred and some change.
And Dr. D, excuse me, Madam Chair, Dr. Dunsmore, in case those funds, because we know how the state is very slow in doing that, we could agree to allow those funds to come out of the capital outlay until those funds are actually delivered and then reimbursed back into capital outlay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, Mrs. Smith?
Okay, the, there's a thirty-two thousand dollar per year licensing fee for the, not guaranteed not to increase for three years, and invoiced on July first of each year. Now, that thirty-two thousand, that's coming from us then, right? Is that?
Yeah, after the first year, yes, sir.
Okay. And so, and that's in perpetuity, pretty much?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's ongoing training, software updates, and they monitor the emergency call system. So when we build the pyramid, for lack of a better term, who's on the call list, the sheriffs, the MT, fire, ambulance, all the police areas. So the ongoing updating of that platform and assuring that our whole call systems, that's, they handle that.
But now, if we receive the grant, and we only, let's say we only use a hundred thousand dollars, we have that money in store to continue paying for this until that money?
The grant money has to be used for the actual hardware and the stuff.
Okay, all right. So it's a one-time thing, and then that's, that's why you, okay.
They have, they have a separate, so the safety and security grant has four arms to it. One is for additional human capital, SROs, so we can't supplant. The good news is our county had authorized those four additional SROs for us. We are going to be asking for additional money, again, it's based on our ADM, so it's money, if we can get it, we're going to get it. There's a hardware piece of that, and then there's a piece for building upgrades. Right now, they're only going to be giving the building upgrades to tier-one counties, we're a tier-two county, so we're not eligible for that for another year.
And one other thing, Dr. Dunsmore, you did say that there were other school systems in our region that were?
Out in this region, Onslow has signed on with them, there's several down around Charlotte, Mac, but here in our region, Onslow signed on with them. Green County signed on with them, Brunswick signed on with them, and New Hanover was in the process.
So was there any discussion about a consortium?
Well, that's, actually, this price that they gave us to come in is pretty much what he had, and that company came in and did. And I think that's, as I was calling around other companies that aren't quite as comprehensive of this, and I was getting ballpark figures, yeah, they, they did a good job of the initial setup, because for them to bring in the equipment to do that, it's more cost-effective, obviously. They can come out here to northeast North Carolina and knock us all out and move on.
All right, are we ready for a vote? And the vote is to engage, navigate, prepare, contract services for school safety. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Next, Madam Chair, I was asking, and again, I apologize for the lateness of this. There's a lot of talk out in the General Assembly about our agricultural programs here in the state, and particularly Senate Bill seven eleven, which is the North Carolina Farm Act, and it's two thousand and eighteen, so there's a lot of discussion out there. They are asking counties, particularly that are tied to agriculture, that we do a resolution in support of the agricultural community. And it is a resolution, if I could, ma'am, I will read it, and the board then could please approve. But it's whereas the agriculture and agribusiness is the number-one industry in North Carolina, contributing eighty-five billion to our state's economy. I apologize, I didn't get the exact number of what it is to our county, but I know it's a large, large number. Whereas we enjoy a food supply that is abundant, affordable, and among the world's safest, thanks in large part to the efficiency and productivity of North Carolina farmers. And whereas our farmers provide the food, fuel, and fiber for our state and country. Whereas agriculture touches the lives of everyone, whether it be in our daily meals, our clothes we wear. Whereas farmers support other community businesses in the local economy. Whereas it is estimated that we are going to in, need to increase food production by at least seventy percent by the year two thousand and fifty to meet the growing world food demands. Whereas we are losing farmland at an alarming rate, and it's getting progressively more difficult to recruit and retain farmers willing to work our state's land. And whereas we need to support our agricultural industry and our farmers and encourage a safe and abundant food supply. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the school board of Wayne County Public Schools, do hereby support Senate Bill seven eleven and the Farm Act, and it would be dated this day, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
A second.
Any discussion?
I, I don't, I can't see anything in particular that we could support, it's just that, not having read the deal and everything that's in it, you know, to express support for something that we've not read, you know, I think is something that causes me pause for concern, because I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that it's Senate Bill seven eleven is what it says it is, but I just never had a chance to read it, you know? And I know that's a resolution, but the bill itself, I'm sure contains additional language. So that's my only hesitation, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to vote against it, it's just that I just don't know what's in the bill.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would like to echo, echo the comments of Mr. Smith.
All right, and Mr. Dr. Dunsmore?
No, I was just going to say I didn't read the bill, it was presented to me, just because of, we're an agricultural community, to support the agricultural.
I, um, I too have not read the bill, and I've, I've heard that concern mentioned also, you know, by other folks concerning this bill is that they hadn't, there's always a bill, so. But it's my understanding a resolution, it's a resolution. I'm in favor of this because I feel like it's a resolution on our part in support of agriculture and, and North Carolina farming. I would like to put a thing, say one thing, too, that a large part of that number is forestry. Most people don't consider forestry as agriculture, but forestry as agribusiness. So I do support it, and having said that, I'd like to make a motion we approve this.
Already moved and a second.
Well, you got a third now. I was actually trying to Google the number that forestry contributes, but, and it's on here, but I can't read it.
Any other, any other comments or concerns? Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor of approving the resolution for agriculture? Indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? We have an extension?
Right, one extension.
One extension. All right. Okay, let's see, have we covered everything? Now we're down to the consent agenda, and we need to, I need a motion to pull the personnel?
How do we get it all straight?
Let's get it straight.
We did have to amend it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment that was made, what was the last section called?
To the personnel report.
To the personnel report.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
That covers it, so I need a second.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull the item F, approval of contracts, for a separate vote and some discussion.
Can't discuss.
And I'll second that, because I wanted to make, I would like to ask the same thing.
You can, you can pull it.
We can pull, but can we discuss? Once, once you remove it from the consent agenda, then you can discuss.
Gotcha, okay, I'm with you.
The purpose of the consent agenda is to vote without discussion.
But I have two motions on the floor.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
No, you don't. You got one motion.
Got one motion, because I was going to ask the same thing.
But you can pull anything, I'm okay.
Okay, all right.
But now, Madam Chairman, I.
Now, now, wait a minute, you, you basically do, because Ms. Strickland moved to approve the consent agenda with the amended personnel report on it.
Yes, she did.
Ms. Flowers is moving to amend the consent agenda to remove the?
Item F.
The item F, so those would be two different motions. So the, Ms. Strickland can either withdraw her motion?
I'm willing to amend my motion to allow for Mr. Flowers' removal of item F.
Can you wait till I ask for some things to be made?
Golly, gee, I rescind my, please, thank you. Who was the second?
I think it was Mr. West.
Mr. West, so would you rescind your second?
I rescind my second.
Thank you, now. We are in preparation to vote for the consent agenda. Any concerns or discussion, ma'am?
Well, what you're, what you're ready for is Mr. Flowers' motion to amend the consent agenda to remove item F.
All right, but he also has some items.
We'd like to remove two, so can we name all those first?
What is the one that you want to remove?
Well, I've got, I'd like to remove number fifty-one thirty, which is a first reading. Number seventy, seventy-nine twenty policy, and this policy number eighty-three hundred.
Okay.
Which is a second reading.
Eighty-three.
And it's really more for a point of clarification on those policies than anything else.
What was the second one?
Mine is I for a point of clarification.
All right, we have I, okay, this is what we're asking to be approved. We're asking for F, approval of contracts and POs. We're asking for I, budget resolution. We're asking for K, policy fifty-one thirty, and we are asking for S, policy eighty-three. So I need a motion.
And policy seventy-nine twenty.
Oh, jeez. R, okay, R and S.
R, okay.
So F, I, K, R, and S?
F, I, K, R, and S, yes.
Wait a minute, I might pull one myself.
Showtime.
All right, we need a motion.
So we need a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove items F, I, K, R, and S.
And the amended personnel report.
You can vote on that separately.
Are we pulling the personnel report, since we're doing all of this?
Doesn't really need to be pulled, more discussion, so.
But you can't let it go in as it is, because it hasn't been amended.
No, it just has to be worded properly.
Yes, she has to.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the removal of F, K, I, R, and S, and accepting the amendment of the personnel report.
I'll second that.
All right.
I'm tired, we're lucky.
Okay. And we need a vote to do this?
Right.
To approve, okay. So all in favor, indicate by showing the right hand. Any opposed? All right, and now we are open for discussion on F.
All right, approval of contracts. I keep all members on the summary.
Okay.
Okay, item two, the annual service agreement for Spring Creek Middle and Gratham Middle on the solar management. My question is Duke Power was going to pay us for any overage in power from these two schools. We entered in this manage, a great management agreement to keep them up so that they would be performing correctly. But my question is, how are we doing with Duke Power?
We do get monthly rebate amounts back from Duke Power, I don't have the, you know, totally get a rebate amount, but I can get that.
Maybe if you could get us that information, well, it probably varies each month, so if we could have some kind of history on how we're doing with that, because the board, if you remember, we, all of the discussion about that. So I'm in favor of the contract. The other question I had, and this may be totally different, but item number four, there's management solutions there, thought exchange, software services for district survey planning. I don't know what that program does, but is there a possibility that that program is, would be doing something that we're fixing to consider hiring somebody to do?
No, that's, that, that program is our surveys that we put out last year, that we're going to continue doing those surveys, so they manage that and put those out.
But it has nothing to do with school district, okay, I have no other questions.
Mr. Hayes, let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
Outside of the monthly revenues we receive from Duke for our overages, if we have any, did, we did receive, we have received some lump sum checks.
We have received a couple of lump sum checks also.
Right.
Yes, I was going to include that in.
And I don't know the, the purpose of Mr. Flowers' questions, but I think it is to see maybe if what we get back is going to cover some of that maintenance cost.
Yeah, just see, see where we're at. We all, the Board of Education, we all went kind of out on a limb, I guess, and this was completely new technology. And I think it would be interesting to see exactly where we're at, because it was my understanding that the units would be upsized by maybe twenty percent. Anybody can correct me if they can remember better, but they were upsized so that there would be an energy left over from the operation of the schools to sell back into the grid, and Duke Power would pay us for that. And you said we are getting paid, but we've never received, to my recollection, any real numbers on where we're at with that. You understand?
I will provide that information.
Correct me, you just said something that I've never heard before, okay? I was under the understanding when we did this with these schools, that we were told that we would pay a monthly bill, and at the end of the year, Duke would send us a lump sum check on what was accumulated during the year. And you just said we received monthly checks from them?
We did.
Okay, well, that's different than how we were told.
Well, monthly, yearly.
I also know that we had to scrap that battery unit that was there too, when we had to cut expenses at the schools too. And that plays a big impact on what we sell to the grid.
And just, it just brought this fresh to mind, that we're doing this service contract to, and it also brings to mind, if we are receiving additional funds, do we need to designate some funds to accumulate to repair these things? Because I think the life on them was like twenty years. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Hayes, if you'll get that for us. I don't have any other question.
I would like to add that money, in my opinion, that Brady Train, that we're paying Brady Train is well worth the investment, because it's already proved itself in that Gratham Middle school.
Well, we, yeah, we, we didn't do it to start with, right?
Right.
We didn't do it to start with, and then we come out and wish to have.
Yeah, and because Brady Train was kind enough to identify some issues down there.
Yeah, sure.
Outside of a contract that brought our attention to it, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, my, my wanting to pull the POs, contracts and POs, I actually voted to approve this in the, in the finance meeting. However, since that time period, I had. However, since that time period, I have spoken with some teachers and some maintenance personnel. And, um, item number sixteen, high standard cleaning. We have always had a question as to the original contract as to whether they were gonna provide the materials to clean with and we were under the understanding that they were going to. I also understand that we have a stockpile of cleaning materials that have not been used and I would like for that to be investigated. And then the other thing is, in speaking with some of the teachers, um, they said, um, they said that they certainly would appreciate a, um, a survey to be done, maybe on Survey Monkey or whatever, so that we can get input from them on the cleaning of their classrooms because they said the quality of the cleaning has gone downhill, uh, since this contract was awarded. So, we're looking at two different things, if I, and I wanna be corrected here. We're looking in this contract with paying them just for stripping and waxing the floors during the summer months, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, but that does not, this is separate from our regular cleaning contract with them, is that correct?
It would be separate.
Okay, alright, I also understand that when that's been done before in the past, that there was a pretty shoddy job done and that they waxed right over some of the stuff that should have been stripped and the places that had been. So, with that, I prefer, I prefer to vote against that contract until we can further investigate it. But I know we're under a timeline and it's gotta be done while school's out, so, I'm just, I asked that...
Madam Chair.
Mr. Hayes, and you may not know this, uh, you may know it, Mr. Salves may know it. They're not stripping and waxing, that's just only, what, how many schools is it?
About six or seven.
Yeah, because there's a lot, the majority of our schools are stripping and waxing their own floors still. And I can't remember, why did we decide to do, why did we decide just to do a few of them?
Piloting.
We were piloting it to try it to see if it was better.
And actually, High Standards came back in, redid some of the floors we had done.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to also speak to that because, uh, we did have presentation by High Standards Cleaning and another, uh, janitorial custodial, um, company come in just recently. And one of the things that I had recommended to Dr. Harold and others is that maybe we needed, before we would even consider approving any kind of extension or new contract with High Standards that some members of the board on Facilities Committee needed to go out and kinda look at some of these schools for ourselves.
Well, get some input from a survey.
Look, get some, yeah, yeah. We could do both of them.
I had, I had one teacher that she said, um, I would, I would advise you if you did a survey not to survey the principals but to survey the teachers. Because they're the ones that are having to sweep and glean their own classrooms because it's not getting done.
When is this con, this current contract with High Standards up? It was only a year, wasn't it?
Yes, up June thirtieth.
September...
June thirtieth.
Partly concerned by the manner of these things with the floors there, already started stripping and waxing the floors. My understanding is we have dayboards at these schools now, so if they pull out June thirtieth, they'll have floors that are, will come to a standstill.
So, we're voting on something tonight that's already been started, the process has already started?
Yes, sir, because they were, they go to the end of this month. So, a school got out, some of these schools, they started the process of stripping and waxing, so...
Well, might I say, uh, Dr. Harold, um, you or some of your folks, um, before we, if, if we're gonna move forward with this, um, before we release funds to them, you double check and make sure it's done satisfactorily.
But this doesn't open a new contract, does it? Because this should be separate.
Yeah, this is, uh, to take care of the, um, the floors for those schools during the July timeframe.
Alright, so what happens with the contract that, that we have with them in June?
The contract that we currently have for them to take care of the schools that they have in the, um, central attendance area will be ended. And so, there would have to be, uh, either a new contract or an extension of it or an expansion, reduction, whatever the case may be. But that contract ends June thirtieth.
And, but that doesn't impact the work that's needing to be done in this, uh, for this?
No.
Okay, alright.
Now, I understood you just to say that the contract that ended June the thirtieth with High Standard was for the central attendance area?
Well, whichever schools they have, I believe they were all central attendance, they may not be, but...
I thought they serviced some other schools as well, don't they?
They do, Eastern Wayne High School, Edgewood.
I think I'm just asking a question because he said central attendance, I didn't consider Eastern Wayne a central attendance area school. That's why I was asking the question.
That's an old term, we need to quit using it anyway, Coach.
Well, I'm just going by what we said, so...
Yeah, I know. That went away with the, uh, with the city of gold.
Madam Chair, my question is relative to item twenty-six, the renovation of the CTE kitchen at Charles B. Acock. How did that come about? How did that, that purchase order come about?
That, um, uh, that's a, uh, a CTE project to actually go in and, and take care of remodeling the cabinets and so forth. So, I don't know if it was a request of the principal or just coming through CTE, I, I don't have that information.
It's actually in the last year, we did the adjacent classrooms that only had one kitchen. And they have, um, they actually have three teachers with school food schedules and they only have one lab with four kitchens and one lab with one kitchen. And they were rotating and sharing, and so last year we made with one classroom from one kitchen to four kitchens. And we didn't have much money to put that much money at one school. And so, this year, we're doing, you know, upgrading the other one.
So, this is actually coming out of CTE funds?
It is.
Alright, are there any more concerns on this one? And we can move forward to budget resolution I.
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, we're gonna vote on each one?
I make a motion.
Now, you've got the, all of the different, how do you have it packaged, just one section, everything is together on F? Because you have different, people with different questions about different portions of things.
We had two, four, and twenty-six. And I think that was the only, those were the only ones.
Okay.
Uh, let me see about the, um, uh, sixteen. We discussed items two, four, sixteen, and twenty-six on approval of contracts and POs.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item F, approval of contracts, because we had pulled the whole thing off of the consent agenda. So, I make a move, we approve them all.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, any discussion, further discussion? Alright, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand? All in favor indicate by raising your right hand? Alright? All, all that are opposing? Okay, so we do not approve?
No, somebody else can come back with a different motion.
Okay.
If there is, for example, there may be only one item out there that we all do not agree on.
So, you can, you could approve, since you had four that were points of discussion, you can start with motion to approve everything but items two, four, sixteen, and twenty-six. And then you can do each of those individually so that people can vote and see which item, which item is the one that the people have a disagreement with.
Alright, I need a motion, well, I think we already had that a motion to approve everything.
That failed.
Yeah, and that failed, so now I need a motion to approve each item, so I'm taking item number two. I need a motion.
Hold tight.
The need of motion to approve all of except two, four, I mean, whatever it is.
It's two, four, sixteen, and twenty-six, I believe.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright. All in favor of approving the contracts and POs except for items two, four, sixteen, and twenty-six? Please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Alright.
So, now start with item two.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number two.
Second.
Item number...
Item number two.
The Brady Train Services.
That's the one we just voted on, ain't it?
No, we pulled number two.
Oh, okay, we excluded it, oh, perfect.
Alright, so all of those in favor of item number two, which is the annual service agreement for Spring Creek Middle School and Granton Middle School solar management? Please indicate by raising your right hand. Alright, any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve number four.
Need a second?
Second.
Alright, those in favor of prudent, prove, uh, of approving item number four, which is...
Fulcrum Management Solutions.
Yes. And that is for the survey planning and execution. Indicate approval by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, I need it for sixteen.
I need to make a motion that we approve item number sixteen.
I need a second?
I second.
Alright. Um, all in favor of approving item number sixteen, which is High Standards Cleaning?
Any discussion?
Well, we already discussed it.
Well, this is individual specific.
Okay, but it's individuals, do we need to go another round of discussion for?
You can call for whether any, there's, if there's any additional discussion that's necessary.
Any discussion?
Just real quickly, this is specific to stripping and waxing these floors at these schools. This has nothing to do with the contract for next year of cleaning the classrooms. And so, I believe that we need to go ahead and get this done. I know how much good work that they have done at other schools, especially when they had to clean up Meadow Lane as bad a shape it was in. And I've heard nothing but positives on that, and that is why I made the motion to approve.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, Madam Chair, that, uh, and maybe I can, maybe I'm gonna vote for it, I just wanna make a point. And this certainly is, is a, we need to look at this very closely, this doesn't ever happen again because we've already got people doing work and we've not approved the payment of it. So, if we were not to approve this contract, we've got people out there that have already done work that would expect to be paid and we've not approved a contract for it. That's my whole concern about it.
Well, we actually have a contract in place for work that's done now, it ends June thirtieth. So, anything they were to do in July, um...
So, why are we voting on this now if they've already started doing this work? I thought I heard you say that they've already started stripping and waxing floors.
I asked the question, you said we're voting on something that they've already started doing.
Well, the, um, there's work that continues into July. Uh, when school ended for, you know, some of these schools, they began the preparation of taking care of things for the, the summer, which was part of the waxing.
I understand that, but this is very specific to a dollar figure in school buildings and it is a separate contract. And I understood Dr. Harold to say that work for this specific outline item has already begun.
One of the things that we're doing for facilities is as we're looking at the process of getting out all of the services, prioritizing our services, High Standard as well as SSC gave us recommendations, we gave us quotes, we're gonna do. So, through this contract price negotiation, we have not extended any contract for High Standard Cleaning to continue their services throughout all of next year. So, the discussion began, uh, Mr. West, at the, the current contract came to an end and we have no people in place because each of these schools, I understand, at least for, only have two dayboards because I was not here, but I understand that custodial staff at that time, they have been pulleders in other places because they took over. So, if they are not renewed and they end their services based on the current contract on June thirtieth, we will have no one in place to finish the floors for this summer.
And I completely understand that, but I don't think this is a good practice for us to have people performing work for a contract that we haven't voted on.
Well, and maybe as we look at custodial services because of, you know, when the time of school gets out at June tenth or somewhere there and they amend it again, maybe we re, if we do this in the future, maybe we restructure our contract that exists to win us our services.
Well, this should have been, been bid out and voted on in April or May.
In the private industry, you would, this is not a practice you would want to, I mean, I, we may, that's my whole, that's my whole holdup with it.
Alright, Mrs. Smith?
I have a, I have a slightly different understanding of what I'm hearing. And my understanding is that if the contract is allowed to run out June thirtieth, then all work will cease. Right now, they are working under the current contract. This is a request for an extending that contract so that we can get the work done over the summer. And they're not working under this contract, they're working on the contract that extends, that ends on June thirtieth. So, I'm, I'm very clear on that. It's no, I'm not, I'm not confused at all.
It doesn't say about, anything about an extension.
Well, it's a new contract, but they're not going to...
An extension is a new contract.
This contract does not commence until we approve it. They are currently doing what work they're doing under the current contract that exists and expires on June thirtieth. They're not doing work on, they're not doing two contracts at the same time. I, I get it.
Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Madam Chair, I'd like to call for the vote.
Alright. All in favor of approving, uh, the contract with, um, High Standards Cleaning? Please indicate by raising your right hand. Alright, those opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, item twenty-six, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright. All in favor of approving item number twenty-six with Newcom cabinets? Please indicate by raising your right hand? Any opposed, same? Alright, motion carries.
Yeah, it's that easy. It's that easy.
Ah, I don't know that that was easy, but...
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number I. Item number, item I. It's not really a number, is it?
Item I.
Who, who pulled it?
Uh, it was pulled when we pulled F, I, K, S, and R.
Yes, I know that.
I think I did, probably.
Was, is there a question?
No, it was basically a question, it wasn't, um...
So, you've got a motion to approve I?
Mm-hmm.
I need a second.
I second.
Alright, discussion?
Yes, I got a question relative to, uh, your capital outlay fund. What is that state business?
Those are buses. We lease, um, or we actually replace our buses and the state provides us, uh, the funds to make the payments to pay for the buses. So, that's our projection of what we will pay, um, in eighteen nineteen.
And the local appro, uh, appropriation is two million? What happens to the funds that's left from the previous year?
They roll over into, um...
So, we don't include them in our budget for this year upcoming?
Well, we, we're in the midst of closing out, uh, this year and so, once I know totally what the number is, we'll come back and, and add that in.
Based on that, based on that, I would recommend that we not approve it until we know what all the funds are, budgets are.
Any other discussion? Alright, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget resolution two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. All in favor, show by raising your right hand? Any opposed? One. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, I think K is next.
Yes.
There we go. For first reading.
What was that?
K. And I need a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, this is item fifty-one thirty, and even though I didn't think we voted on first readings, but it's in here in the consent agenda, so, but anyway, um, I have, I have a question. If you look at the last, uh, paragraph, "The principal or designated of each high school shall make the application forms described in, in, uh, the general statute one sixty-three A-dash-eight-sixty-two available to all students and others who are eligible to register or pre-register to vote." Voter registration forms are available at, and it gives the website. Assisting students in the completion of the forms may only be done by board employees who volunteer... Voter registration forms are available at," and it gives the website, "Assisting students in the completion of the forms may only be done by board employees who volunteer to do so." So my question is this, is this the voter registration board? Is it the Board of Education? Is it, who is?
Fair question.
The, who is the board employees? Who are the board employees that's mentioned in here?
Mr. West, do you want me?
Ma'am.
Do you want me to speak about that?
Please, if you will, because we, we, go ahead. You can explain it. We did it in the policy committee.
So we, so we were discussing that in a policy committee meeting, and Mr. West, you can chime in, as well as Ms. Burden that was there. So that assisting students in the completion of forms may only be done by board employees. That is the Board of Election Committee. That's who that is referring to.
Okay, so three people that make up the Board of Elections will come in and actually register the people to vote?
It may be volunteers that they have selected to come in, like they normally, like they used to do.
So it really needs to be more of a Board of Elections, employees, or volunteers.
Or volunteers of the Board of Elections.
Volunteers approved by the Board of Elections.
So we can clean that up at the next policy.
Okay.
Well, it's my understanding that they were going to provide the volunteers as well.
They were, yes, that's correct.
That's why we said Board of, Board of Election Volunteers.
It's just very vague the way it, the way it reads right now. I don't know whether by reading that, I don't know whether, so it's sitting around this day.
I mean, is that the way it came back to us, Dr. Mason?
It is, it is. We can make that correction and actually specify Board of Election, so that we know that we're speaking to that board specifically.
That's all I wanted to know.
Because we were kind of walking through this with clarification.
That's right. Yes, sir.
And make sure you extend it out and volunteers are of the Board of Elections, not any volunteer, in particular volunteer.
No, it has to be volunteers approved by the Board of Election.
Right, I wanted to make sure that was in there as well.
Okay, we will...
Now, these students have to be eighteen?
Yes, in the high school, yes, sir. That's correct.
Well, seven, isn't it seventeen to eighteen? They need to be eighteen by voting time.
By the date of vote?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Surely, anybody that, that far along in high school can fill out a voter registration form. But anyway.
So you made a motion to approve this, didn't you?
Yes, because it's a first reading, so we can fix it coming back as the second reading. So unless y'all really want me to amend my motion, I'm going to leave it as is.
I need some clarity, Madam Chair.
All right, what is it that you need?
Okay, this is under the consent agenda. It's a first reading. If we pass, pass this, does that mean that it's law?
Nope.
Or does it mean it come back as the second reading?
That's my understanding.
It doesn't seem like to me that this should be something that was under consent agenda.
In the past, we, in the past, we had had first readings just as informational only and not considered to be voted on in consent agenda.
Ms. Burden, if you remember, we, we put a couple of these things. There's another one, I think, that's a first reading under consent.
Consent agenda because we wanted it approved tonight. Yes, we did. But I think that in, in order to address your concerns, um, we need to vote against approving it tonight and take it back to policy to make the corrections that have been indicated here. I think because we were in the discussion, we understood what we were saying.
Yes.
Because there had been, um, it had been discussed previously, and then we investigated the situation because we wanted the Board of Election to be involved in the process.
Yes.
Rather than just placing it on one teacher who, through his planning period of lunch, is trying to reach these kids to be there, to assist them.
Let me ask you a quick question. Isn't there a time limitation when somebody registers to vote before they can vote in the election? I mean, they have to, is it thirty days, sixty days, or something?
I'm not sure, but there is a time limitation.
Well, some people registered on the day during the election primary and voted that day.
I was just asking, was that a factor in why it was?
They just have to be eighteen by the election.
Just as long as you're eighteen by the election day, or the voting day.
Madam Chair, is this not something that Dr. Mason could change the verbiage in right now? We've done that before.
Board of Elections.
Where's our attorney?
I'm right here. You could, a few things I was going to say. The first is, I have boards that do it both ways. Some boards, quote unquote, approve the first reading with the understanding that the policy is not enacted until it's been approved after, twice, basically, on the first reading, I'm on the second reading. It's not required. I have some boards where the first reading is just informational, and you don't actually vote to approve the policy until the second reading. Um, so just going back to kind of that issue. And then you can, if everybody wants the language amended, you can vote to approve the policy with that amendment. We can go back and change it, but the language has to be specific, so we know what you want to put in there.
Well, would that satisfy you, your concern, Mr. President?
Would that satisfy everybody if we did it that way?
Sure, whatever.
So that we don't have to bring it back?
I would like to see the policies not be included in consent agenda.
I'm sorry?
I said I would prefer that policies need not be a part of a consent agenda.
Well, there was just a couple of things that I think...
Because that, we've never, in the past, we've never done it as, as a consent item. We've always brought them up for discussion.
Well, I don't think...
Because there might be some issues in that policy.
Okay, well, we can pull whatever we need to pull, so we took a chance, and evidently it did not go over well, uh, to put it in a first reading and put it in the consent account, calendar for a vote, or agenda for a vote. So, um, we will take heed to the comment that was made, um, but if we could do this so that we could end this tonight, I would truly appreciate it as the chairperson.
Would you prefer me to pull my motion to approve it as a first reading and restate, so it can be amended?
Yes, yes, that's what I would like.
I am, okay. Uh, Mr. Flowers, were you the second on that one?
I was. I pulled my second.
Okay. Let's see if I can gather my brain on this one. I would like to make a motion that we approve, I've lost which one it is, item, is it K?
K.
K.
Uh, with the corrections to state that that is the Board of Elections, not just simply board, as well as volunteers approved by the Board of Elections.
I second. Let's vote.
All right, we have a first and a second, and it says assisting students in the completion of the forms may only be done by the Board of Election employees or volunteers approved by the Board of Election to do so. All in favor? Show by raising your right hand. Okay, any opposed? All right, one opposed.
All right, where are we down to now? That was K, so we're down to R. I'd like to make a motion that we approve R.
Seventy-nine twenty.
Yes.
Okay, I ask will that be pulled? Uh, if you will look at, uh, under item C seventy-nine on page seven, or Policy Code seventy-nine twenty B. Um, item C is a criteria for primary consideration in reduction of force. It lists seven different items there. But if you'll notice, the area that has been scratched out that is on seventy-nine twenty B, um, it adds a statement, "The superintendent shall develop a system for using the above-mentioned factors to determine which employees will be recommended to the board for inclusion in the reduction in force." Um, I got to thinking about that, and you kind of already have the guidelines up there by which you would make that decision, but then I got to thinking about, what about programs? If we're going to cut a program out, or that type of thing, what would be the, the, the system that the superintendent would develop and the board not approve one way or the other for exclusion? Uh, I know in the past, when we have discontinued doing some types of programs because they were not effective anymore or whatever, the, the board made that decision. My question, in the way this is worded, is, it says, it doesn't tell what the system is that the super, just superintendent does, just says that he'll develop a system, uh, using those factors above, but it doesn't necessarily say that it's for, uh, board approval. And I just think in some certain circumstances, those decisions may need board approval. And, I mean, Dr. Dunsmore, I mean, was this a suggestion of you or the committee or, or policy committee or what? What was, I want to know what the reasoning behind that being struck and why this was put in, and then how does that work when this is put in?
Basically, that was struck as it came down from the School Board Association's pool out. Um, and I think the reason that I, my understanding was, and Rachel, you can jump in any time, was that every school system had different factors that they were weighing, of what the different situation is. Number one, whatever, if we have to get to a point of a reduction of force, whatever we use as criteria, in my mind, would have to come back to the board for approval before we did anything anyhow.
Well, and that's what it says indeed.
That, well, it says there...
And I think that's a very good example you gave, because if it's a program that is licensure-specific that we're doing away with, I would obviously change the criteria to match...
Well, it says that...
It says the board was...
Will be recommended.
Yeah, so I, I mean, anything that I would do in that, I've been through these in the past, it comes back to the board if this is our criteria, and the board approves the criteria, and then we move forward.
Well, it says recommended to the board.
Right, but my, my key is on develop a system for using the above-mentioned factors.
Right, and that could be any number of things. So, for example, these are the factors that are going to be considered, but how are they going to be considered? Are they going to be, are you going to use a point system to try to determine? But what's the system that's going to be used to show, or how those factors are considered? So the factors are laid out, but the superintendent's going to develop a system for how he's going to use those factors to determine which employees he's going to recommend for, for a rep. So he's, you know ahead of time what system he's using. You know what factors already, but you're going to know ahead of time, what is the system of his application of those factors?
Well, is it going to be consistent across the board, though, too?
Well, that, that's why you want a system for applying the factors. So here are all the factors that we agree are the factors for consideration. Here's the system that we're going to use for applying those factors, the superintendent's going to use for making a recommendation for a rep. That way, when you get a recommendation, you know what system has been used to apply those factors. It, it doesn't part, the idea or the theory behind it is it doesn't part a level of fairness, because it's not, we use the factors this way when we're making this recommendation. We use the factors this way when we're making this recommendation. The system for, for utilizing the factors by the superintendent for recommendations is set ahead of time in hopes that that means that it's more fairly applied.
I just, I, I, I just looked at it, and the more I thought about it, I said, this could easily be a double standard or something, but that's, I mean, if it's, it's okay with the rest of the board, I can go with it. But, um, there's no, no offense on you, Dr. Dunsmore, because I figured this probably did come down from the School Board Association, but it's just, it just leaves, it leaves the, you know, you can go through that right door, you can go through that left door, you know, and, and that's what I'm looking at here. Um, I, I just, I just felt like, um, it would be nice if we knew what that system was, but I, I guess you...
Could put a line in that in the first place. You look to be board members, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Tell me which door to go out, and I'll go out.
All right. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor of approving Policy seventy-nine twenty, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed in the same manner? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Hold on one second. Madam Chair, may I ask the board to revisit, um, the policy you talked about a moment ago, Policy fifty-one thirty? I have our, um, file on that, and I didn't write that revision, but I did bring the file with me on it. And in pulling the file and looking at the statute, the board they're talking about is the Board of Education.
Okay, well, see, that I got a problem with.
So the statute, what the statute says is, um, I was going to read it for you. "A local Board of Education may, but is not required to, designate high school employees to assist in completing the forms. Only employees who volunteer for this duty may be designated by Boards of Education." So what it's saying is, the Board of Education can allow volunteers to help with the completion of the form. You can't force anybody to, to help with the completion of the form.
So my question then is, could those, could those volunteers come from the Board of Elections?
It says that we can designate high school employees to assist in completing the forms.
So they have to be high school employees?
But that doesn't say they can't be Board of Election people. It just says we can select.
No, it says you are, you may, but you're not required to designate high school employees. So you're allowed to designate high school employees, but you don't have to. There's nothing that says that you're allowed to designate Board of Election employees.
Those are the things it says we can't.
That was my question.
No, but I would say where, where it specifically gives you the authority to, and also, it would be hard for you to designate Board of Election employees because you don't have any authority over them.
It would be more of an allow versus designate.
So keeping the, the, um, policy language in line with the statute, the policy language mirror that you have before you were questioning is exactly what's in the statute. But any clarification on the board who can provide employees but can't force anybody to help with the completion is the Board of Education.
Well, my question, my question there is, um, and I think that's the elephant in the room that nobody's really speaking to, is the, um, the impartiality that is absolutely necessary when you start talking about voter registration. Um, it is, it is, uh, the Board of Elections, uh, that's their task, that's their, that's their, that's their, um, responsibility. And there are, there are rules and regulations in place for them to operate in an impartial manner. But we don't, we don't have those same requirements as...
What you addressed in the meeting.
Yeah, we, we did. This came up, uh, for discussion because I asked the question about using, um, because there had been some changes made since I was a principal, so I wanted to find out what they were and why. When I was, um, a principal at a high school, the Board of Elections approved volunteers to come in and work with our students on this registration process. Okay, then you wouldn't just have one person, you would have three or four different people, because you don't want to be persuaded in, in any one direction. So then it changed that a teacher at the school, and that teacher may have volunteered, so I'm not saying that the teacher was forced to do it, but that the, the Board of Elections somewhat stepped back, and then a teacher at the school became responsible for getting this information to students and assisting them in the registration process. And so personally, I have a concern about a teacher being assigned or even volunteering, because it's one person. It's not a group of people to validate what is going on in that process. So that's why we were trying to involve the Board of Elections. So if, if we cannot do that, I mean, but that is why we were trying to do it. And that's why we were looking at board as being the Board of Election and not the Board of Education.
I have a question. If it, if this is a general statute, then what choice do we have tonight?
Right. We have a lot in this one. I would actually propose that we just strike the entire assisting students in the completion of this forms may only be done by board employees to do so.
I'll second.
Because we don't need it.
I'll second.
Let me say that.
Was that a motion?
Things you could say in there would be, you could say something along the lines, other alternative language might be, for example, assisting students in the completion of the forms may only be done by board employees who volunteer to do so.
No, no, no.
So the point, the point of the language is focused on not forcing any board employee to have the, to be delegated the responsibility of assisting with filling out forms.
Correct, but I think the concern coming from the board is any specific lean towards a one party or an other, so we can just eliminate that entire line because we're not required to have anyone do it. Is that accurate?
You're not required. It says you may.
Okay.
So are we saying then that we're not going to provide voter, allow for voter registration?
Oh, no, we provide. We provide the voter registration forms. We just strike after that little blue part, assisting students in the completion of the forms. Because everything else stays. The principal or designee of each high school can make that, or shall make them available, or they can be found at this website.
May, may I suggest you pull it and send it back to policy? The only thing that I, from a legal standpoint, the only thing that I'm concerned about is that I think it's important for the board to specify a policy for your administrators to understand, they cannot delegate to anybody, designate anybody, the responsibility of helping to fill out with those forms. So I'm looking at it. I understand the concern about impartial... So, I'm looking at it, I understand the concern about impartiality from a legal standpoint. I want to make sure that your board policy specifically tells your administrators, so that they know, we are not allowed, I can't, the, the principal, who may not be thinking about it in the way we're thinking about it right now, we don't want that person saying, okay, you go help these kids fill out that form, and that person never volunteered, and now they're in violation, the principal's in violation of the statute.
I just think we're walking on a fine line, just because, I'm going to give you an example. My children, when they, when they registered to vote, and they got old enough to register to vote, their question was, Daddy, how should I register? Should I register to be a Democrat, or should I register to be a Republican? Well, I sat down and I told them both about the two different parties, and I also told them about unaffiliation. I said, this has got to be your decision. And actually, I had one of them vote, register differently from how I was, my party affiliation, but I gave them that opportunity to do what they wanted to do. Now, that being said, I don't know that somebody would do the same thing with them and do it in a more, I guess you would say, aggressive way and say, I think you ought to register this, this is what I am, I think you ought to do that, you know? I think we're putting ourselves in a situation where I, I, I don't question the Board of Elections coming in and sending representatives to do that, because I feel like that would be fair and impartial. But I'm not so sure that, that certain people would not be fair and impartial in trying to assist a student in registering for, to vote. Then, the other thing was, is the way the language was, it could have been led to, led to believe that it would have to be people around this table telling them how to do that. And I think an elected official should be the last one to tell them how to.
I agree.
How to.
I'd like to make a motion that we send Policy 5130 back to the Policy Committee for further review.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I, I do have a question for the attorney regarding this. Is there anything in the statute that would preclude us from requesting the Board of Elections provide training to any volunteers?
Nope. I think that the training would be completely up to you. The focus of the language really was, I understand how you're looking at it, and I understand the concern completely. The, the focus was, nobody should be made to do it.
And I do agree, I agree with that.
And I want you to understand, I'm not opposed, I, I think everybody turns 18, I think every citizen has a right to vote, and I think they ought to register to vote. But I'm, I'm not a, I'm kind of opposed to us getting our feet involved in the middle of that process.
I don't think it's in the scope of the Board of Education.
All right.
I voted against it the first time.
Any more discussion?
Well, we voted on it already.
I have put it back up for a vote.
Do we need to unvote on it?
That's what we're getting ready to do.
She's made another, she's made another motion to send it back to policy.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second on the motion to send Policy 51, oh, 5130 back to the Policy Committee for review. Any discussion?
I'm going to do like Mr. Flowers, I'm going 30.
Okay, in that case, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed?
Madam Chair.
Can we make it through the last one?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item S, Policy 8300.
Okay, Madam Chair, I was wanting to ask for that to be repol, uh, pulled, and in specific.
Hold on a second, do you have a second? Got to have a second first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
I'll give you a second just for discussion.
All right.
Item number four.
Yes.
Uh, it says, "No monies will be expended regardless of the source, including the monies derived from federal, state, local, or private sources, except in accordance with the Board's budget resolution or amendments to the budget resolution. The superintendent is authorized to transfer monies from one appropriation to another within the same fund, subject to such limitations and procedures as may be prescribed by the Board Resolution or state or federal laws or regulation. Any such transfers must be reported to the Board at its next regular meeting and recorded in the minutes." Now, let me back out of that and go to my notes, okay? Just a second. I had a couple of questions about that, where it's talking about the superintendent shall, and so my question is, is what are the limitations of that practice? And, and this is something that maybe Dr. Dunsmore can answer for me, because I'm not quite sure what the authority is by finance, by you, to be able to move funds, you know, from one place to the other. My, my question is, and I'll give you an example, like Title I or state-designated funds, where they are designated, they have to be used in a certain area. Does that fall under like the auspices of the Board, where if you make a decision to transfer five, over $5,000, that we need to be involved in it? And do we need to be involved in it prior to it already being done? Because this is saying that it needs to be reported to the Board at the next meeting.
Because we move money within budget codes frequently, that's when you get those budget amendments each month.
Right, and I know we get the budget amendments.
If it's at a $5,000 limit, we're going to have a board meeting probably every week.
The $5,000 limit was for expenditures.
Right, expenditures, but my question is, is in moving and transferring the money, does, I mean, does that, my question would be, are, do you have the authority to move it, like in Title I, when it's designated, it's got to be useful? Let me give you an example. I use this example all the time, you ride down the highway and you hit potholes all the time, but the federal money pays for flowers to be planted on the side of the road, and the potholes can't be filled, okay? And I mean, that's a known fact, we all experience that, it's torn our cars up while we're looking at the pretty flowers. My question is, is when you have federal-designated monies like that, are you allowed to move it from fund to fund to do the jobs that you feel like need to be done? Do you have that flexibility?
No, it says it has to be used within the budget code to choose, and if not, I go to jail.
So, we, we don't transfer money between federal and local? That is your question. And then, for all the federal funds, they would do a, a plan for how the money's going to be spent. It goes into the system and is approved. And so, we have to stick within the design of the way they plan to spend that money. So, if Dr. Dunsmore said, move Title I to teach improvement, you know, we cannot.
Okay, so, in what you can do, are there any, in the, in the area, in the realm of what you can do, are there any limitations to that practice? When you say you can do it within the same budget code?
Let, let me just go ahead and say that there is a, the General Statute 115(c)(4)33 provides authority for the superintendent to have the authority to transfer within the same fund. It's just that the Board has to adopt a resolution that says it. We, we treat, including that in a policy, saying that they can do it as your resolution. So, it's basically, the superintendent has statutory authority to move it, but the Board has to okay that authority. We do that by including a statement in your policy that says, this is, basically, this is our resolution that allows the superintendent to move, to transfer funds with, transfer monies within a fund.
Okay, but there's no limitations on the amount of money that can be transferred? That's what I'm asking.
I, I don't know about any limitation on an amount, a specific amount of money that can be transferred within the fund. But what, that's why the resolution is written within state, or as long as it's compliant with state or federal law. Because one of the things we tried to do in our policy writing is, if it was an amount, we wouldn't put the amount in here, because if they meet next year and raise it by $50 or $1,000, then you have to meet again. So, we treat it broadly enough to say, if it's legal, and he can do, if there's not a legal prohibition on the transfer of the funds within the fund, then the Board is saying, if it's legal for him to move that money, and he feels like he needs to move the money, then he can move the money within the fund. We're okay with that. That's essentially what you're saying here. Nothing about what you would have here would allow him to do something that wasn't already legal for him to do. Does that make sense?
As I understand it, we, I take our small capital outlay funds, the entire amount has to be budgeted out. We ask, ask the money from the county, the entire $2 million is budgeted out for items. But all during the year, things fall out of the sky, like last year. Purchase was a chiller that fell out, you know, in expense, so those funds within that account will move to rank. Is that right? So, I mean, that's basically what we do now, this is just.
Ensuring that.
I, I read this too, Mr. Pridgen, and I went back through it, and I said, well, you know, as long as he's not taking money out of child nutrition and putting it over in facilities.
All right, are we ready for the vote? All right, all in favor of approving Policy 8300, Physical Management Standards, Second Reading. Indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And all others have been approved, and I'll probably vote. Okay, now we are at board members and superintendent comments.
Hold on one second, I just want to make sure, so we pulled these three. I, I want to go back and make sure, I need to look at my notes, but we pulled 8300, 7920, and 5130. And I just want to ensure that we have, we voted, that you voted, on all of the other policies that have been presented.
Yes, we did that first. And we pulled these out, and then we voted on each one of these.
And 5130 is the only one going back.
Yeah, it's going back, we changed the vote. All right. Any comments, starting with our board attorney?
Madam.
All right, Mr. West.
Ms. Burden, I'd just like to say, and she just got up and left probably 10 minutes, five minutes ago, but Phyllis Moore has been assigned back to cover our board meetings. Yes, she has, and she's, she's always been very fair and consistent, and she's done an excellent job. I'm glad to see her back. I think she, she does, she does well for the school system. And the other thing, Ms. Burden, I was going to invite everybody in the room, if y'all would like to sing "Happy Birthday" to Ms. Burden, this is her birthday. But if you don't, then we'll just acknowledge that and say, "Happy Birthday, Ms. Burden."
You going to lead us?
Well, I can.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Burden. Happy birthday to you.
I am very happy to tell you that I am 71 years old today. And God has truly blessed me, and I appreciate it, and I want Him to continue to bless me.
Look at that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank all of you. I appreciate it.
Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Ah, thank you, you did a excellent job. Mr. Flowers?
Well, I marked that one off, but anyway, I was in the amen corner. In light of tonight's agenda, I would like to recommend, or in my opinion, we need to take contract approvals and policies out of the consent agenda moving forward and put them back up under board actions, which is where they were at one time, so that we can properly vet them without going through a complicated process being in the consent agenda. But that's my opinion. The other thing is, Mr. Dean Salz is going to be retiring, I want to wish him well. I think you have a little gathering tomorrow, or the next day, or is out? Anyway, I had it, I had it on my agenda, but I got a better offer and I couldn't make it. But it wasn't because I don't wish you well, I do, and I've, I've enjoyed working with you, Dean. I told, I figure you'll probably get your job at University of Mount Albans now, teaching history, local history or something like that, you certainly be good at it. But anyway, I wish you well, Dean, thank you for all you've done to try to help us. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to thank you personally for allowing me the opportunity again to introduce to the community Mr. B.J. Lark and the outstanding job that he is doing. I am extremely proud of him and what he is trying to accomplish. And I wish him well on that endeavor, and I hope that many of us will be willing to contribute to his GoFundMe page. And if you don't do GoFundMe, just send him a little check or something, that would be helpful to him. Second of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Reynolds for that excellent presentation on advanced ed that tonight, it was very informative, and I, I hope that we will take to heart many of the things that she has said relative to what we might need to do. I want to compliment Dr. Tim Harrow on, on his coming in and taking charge of the facilities and recognizing the good and outstanding work that Mr. Salz has done, and I hope that he will continue the efforts that, in that respect. And lastly, I would like to say, congratulations to you, Mr. Salz, for those numerous years of experience and expertise in education in Wayne County. I wish you the best.
Mr. Pridgen?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd, I'd like to, first of all, thank Marsha Manning for the job that she's done at Goldboro High School. She was willing to step up the bat and jump in with both feet and play dual roles, and I certainly do appreciate everything that you've done to help us out. You came on board, and you were, you were thrown into a lot of things, and I really do appreciate what you've done and the hard work you've done. And I really feel like you've made a good impact on a lot of the students there, and I appreciate your, your leadership. And look forward to seeing probably more of you back here at the central office, too, so, anyway. Dean Salz, man, I could sit and talk for hours about you. I know you started to work with us when Rosewood Middle School was being constructed. But, um, anyway, we are, we're, we're, we really do appreciate, we really do, we do really appreciate all the years of service that you have given to this school system and the influence it. Not, not just that you've made on the teachers and, I mean, and the faculty and everybody, the impression you've made on students over the years. I, I looked at that quilt that was at your party last week, that had been made, and I went, wow. What, what a, what a tribute to a person who has been so dedicated in athletics and, and everything that you've done, I mean, and I really do appreciate that. And I know, I know, we're going to probably at some point have to tear Rosewood Middle down, but, um, anyway, since you're gone now, no, I'm just messing with you. But, um, thank you so much, you've done a great job, Dean, and, and I can't say enough for what you have done for this school system. And, and don't, don't just disappear, we'd love to see you around some more, we really would. Carver alumni, yeah, I think we'll be in touch and be telling them how they can help. I know, I've worked with several organizations over the years since I've been on the board mentoring kids, and I know that there's a lot of children out there that probably need to be mentored. There's a lot of children out there that need help tonight. We voted on a lot of people coming in for the summer reading program to, to help children and to help get them where they need to be. But, uh, long-term lasting relationships, not just the summer, is very important, especially for key groups that are willing to come in and help us and, and work with children. And I hope that they may consider to do that. And I'm going to try my best to make one of their functions that they have upcoming. I thought the, the history of Carver would probably be very interesting on October 13th, but I haven't, I haven't checked my schedule to see when or what, or if I can, can make that. B.J., wow, Brogdon Primary School, Raising Funds, great article in the paper. It really was, it was a great article in the paper, and I'm so glad that I got the opportunity to meet him tonight, and I do want to make a contribution. opportunity to meet you tonight, and I do want to make a contribution. It's amazing how one person can make a difference in their school, and it's amazing how one child is making a difference in a school, and having the desire to go out and help other schools. It's just, he put one foot in front of the other, and he is really, it's just ballooned and blossomed, and I just think it's such a wonderful thing. Kudos to him. I mean, he's great, and that's, I got to congratulate his parents, because that's evident that he has been, had great parenting skills, and his mom and dad should be very proud of the job that they have done with him. Margaret Bedore came to us tonight, and that was a very generous gift to Goldsboro High School. I've been on that stage many a time, and it's, it's a great thing for us to have a good sound system in that auditorium now, this time, because it's kind of difficult when you go to concerts and you're sitting about halfway from the stage and you can't hear what's going on. But I really do appreciate the people in the community, players that jumped in and helped her with that project, and I think that's great. It's another great example of something that just a few people can do for our school system if they want to take that under our wing, or under their wing. And then the last comment that I would like to say is, there has not been a single board meeting that I have sat in this particular chair, that when I turn around to do the pledge of allegiance to the flag, I think that nobody out there can see the flag because I'm standing in front of it. And I apologize for that. If I'm reelected, maybe I get in a different chair, so maybe somebody, I started in that seat, so, you know, if I'm reelected, maybe I can get that seat back or something, so I'll be out of the way so people can see the flag. It's kind of tough when you're looking at somebody's back and saying something, but anyway, that's all the comments that I have. Have a great summer, you know, thank you, teachers, for all the job that you've done this year, and I hope, I hope everybody has a good vacation, a good break, and happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was gonna start by saying, Mr. Pridgen stole half of what I had to say till I got to the end, and that was not something I had intended to say at all. I do want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. The Sunday before the last meeting, I started running a fever, so on Monday, I went to the doctor, and I had the flu in May, followed by bronchitis, followed by food poisoning. So I have been absent, and I am sorry for that. And the reason that I even mention that is because I do want to thank Mr. Sean Hicks for coming and speaking today about the drop-off time of the elementary schools being so late. I know Mr. Henderson voiced a concern about that at the last meeting, and I would have as well. I would love if we could really just, I know we won't, but I would love if we could revisit those times on those elementary schools. I'm not leaving my small children at home for a school bus, middle schoolers, high schoolers, sure. But I'm suspicious that it has something to do with our lack of lighting at some of our ball fields for the middle schools, that the decision was made. And it bothers me that we may be putting the needs of a couple of dozen ball players over the needs of hundreds of elementary students and their parents. So thank you, Mr. Hicks, for coming. I know he stayed a long time and finally left. Of course, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Bedore and the sound system, that is huge. I have said for the three years I've been up here, just pick something that you're passionate about, step up and do it. And that's something that she and her family are passionate about, and they're helping, and I greatly appreciate it. Mr. Merrill, thank you for speaking about the Southern Way Gym. That is something that Mr. Henderson and myself, as well as Dr. Dunsmore, have met with Mr. Edgar Marty and Joe Daughtry. This is going forward, they're gonna get the gym, they're not gonna be missed anymore. You've got the right people in place, it's gonna happen. It's going out for bid, Mr. Harold's taking care of that, and we're very excited about it. Also, I want to say that I'm glad to see the tennis courts are gonna be fixed soon at Rosewood High School and at CBA Cock, because it is really sad when you go out there and see the shape that a lot of our facilities are in, but I have full confidence in Mr. Harold that we're gonna have things on an agenda rotation and start getting things fixed. And we'll leave that at that. Mr. Salz, I'm gonna miss you. You got to come back up here so I can harass you.
Every heartbeat phone.
That's exactly right, for the purple and gold. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Okay. Start out by saying, happy birthday to Ms. Burden.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Salz, we've, we've, we've had our, we've had our times together, and they've always been good and always been positive, and I wish you nothing but the best, I really do. To the leadership team, thank you for what you do, excellent presentations. I know you guys work hard all the time, and I know we, we don't make it easy for you, but I do appreciate what you bring to the table. Mr. Merrill, thank you for your comments as well. The presentation by Dr. Reynolds kind of stood out to me, because I made a couple of notes. One of the things that I have, I'm adamant about is that there's too much testing in our school system, and a lot of these tests are just absolutely unnecessary. I've done, you know, some, some reading in my day, Mr. Flowers, and the reading and the study that I've done and the research that I've done, clearly states that testing in and of itself does not make the student a better student.
Indeed.
It's, learning makes him a better student. Okay? And when you start talking about taking snapshots, and I think Mr. Pridgen brought this up, about the 1.6 usage of technology, and that's only at that time, it's the same thing with the EOG test. The EOG test only measures what's happening that day and where that student is at that moment. It doesn't speak to where that student came from, you know, as far as where their starting point to where they are that day. And so I'm, I'm definitely in, in favor of reducing the amount of testing, and I understand there's legislation right now that's being considered by the General Assembly about doing that very thing, so I'm hopeful that they'll do that. The Carver Alumni Event is coming up, I will be speaking to their scholarship banquet, their scholarship program, and I'm probably gonna give Ms. Burden a call to get some pointers, because she's, she's scholarship chairperson for the Dillikos Program, so I'll probably call her to get some points to talk about, so, you know, looking forward to that. And the, something that Mr. Henderson said during the meeting that I thought was very profound, low-performing schools, that snapshot is not an indicator of whether or not learning is going on inside that building. I really appreciate you saying that, Mr. Henderson, because that, you know, this ABC thing that we do is, is really, in a lot of ways, unfair, because you're saying that everybody in that school is an F, and that's not true. You know, everybody in that school is a D, that's not true. So I just think that those things need, bear mentioning. The donation for Goldsboro High School by Ms. Bedore, that was absolutely wonderful. And Ms. Manning, you and your staff are to be commended for what you've had to work with all year as far as facilities and things of that nature. Now, we went to several events, and there were wasps flying around in there, so hopefully they're all gone, because I don't like getting stung. But it is definitely good to see that. And the young man, B.J. Lark, off the chain, off the chain, and it is amazing how one person can make a difference, not only in his school, but in his community. He's got people coming together that did not necessarily have similar points of view, but on this particular point of view, I think everybody can rally around that. That is, that is absolutely amazing. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, this resolution that we were asked to vote on tonight at the last minute, and I hesitated mainly because, like you said, I hadn't read the bill itself, but we were asked to vote on a resolution in support of something we hadn't read. And I, and I, and I did look at some things while I was sitting here, so since it was brought to the table, I will speak to it. The Senate Bill 711 is definitely in favor of agriculture and the, for the state of North Carolina, but there was some concern by the governor as it relates to one part of that bill, and the governor actually vetoed that bill because of that concern, and that concern was that it limits the amount of compensation that a neighbor who lives next to a hog farm, and that hog farm causes damage to their land, it limits how much they can receive in compensation. So there was, you know, it wasn't completely unanimous as far as support for it, but I do understand that the bill in its totality is definitely something that is in the best interests of our agricultural programs for the state of North Carolina, but I did want everybody to know that there was some concern about that bill that, that was brought forward. So I just hope that we don't get, we don't get put in that situation in the future, asked to vote on something that we know nothing about. Okay? Those are my comments.
Dr. Dunsmore?
I'll try to be short and sweet. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Hopefully many more. Mr. Salz, you know how I feel about you, congratulations. I know you'll be around, and congratulations on your last board meeting. That's all I have.
Well, I've had six people, seven people speak, and they have covered everything that has occurred tonight. I do appreciate the presentations that were made and the manner in which they were made, and the information that we received. And of course, I applaud the young man. It says a lot about him as an individual and what he thinks of his teachers and the staff and the students at that school, and the community that is supporting him lets them know how they feel about him as an individual. And so I do encourage everyone to consider making a donation, a contribution, because this is something that is coming back to Wayne County. And he's willing to share the funds, and the fact that he's been so eager that when he's reached his goals, he's been willing to go a step further and a step further. So let's help him accomplish that goal, so that maybe it will set an example for others to do for their school. And the parents are just outstanding, and I know they must be very, very, very proud. They have two handsome sons, and the oldest one is setting a very good example for the young ones. I thank you very much for your recognition of my birthday. Someone said, why are you having board meetings on your birthday? Well, yesterday, we were in appeal hearings from eight to four, and if I had picked Tuesday, two people would have killed me immediately, so. Wednesday was the best day, wasn't it, Dr. Dunsmore?
Absolutely.
So I, I don't feel that I've had a bad birthday now, because I've had a lot of treats and all good things throughout the day, so I really appreciate you doing that. I hope you have a wonderful Fourth of July, and those of you that will be taking vacations this summer, be safe. Now, Mr. Salz. You see, we used to have a little story about driving Miss Daisy. Mr. Salz was the driver, and I was Miss Daisy. And we travel, and we traveled to many athletic events across the state of North Carolina, and while we were traveling, I learned things about North Carolina that I never knew that I did not know about North Carolina. And we are going to miss you, but we appreciate all that you have done for Wayne County. And as someone, some board, as one of the board members said, it's not just the staff that you work with or the administrators that you have served, but it is the impact that you've made on the lives of students who have come in contact with you, and that is, that is the best. Thank you.
The Cougars were good basketballers, weren't they?
Yes, they were.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Mr. Henderson, who has done the most talking tonight? All right, all in favor? I need a motion to adjourn.
I do, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
I do.
Raise your right hand. Good night.